Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley on March 20th, 2018. Our first order of business is a presentation today will be by the City Council. I'm sorry. I'm having a little trouble here. Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the Moreno Valley City Council. The first presentation today will be the City Council proclamation of March 31st, 2018 as Cesar Chavez Day. And we'll have the presentation by our Mayor, Dr. Exine Gutierrez.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we recognize Cesar Chavez Day in the City of Moreno Valley. Many people remember Cesar Chavez as the man who organized migrant agricultural workers to protest for better working conditions and higher wages. Many people also remember Cesar Chavez for his role in unifying people of all cultures against the social blight that is racial discrimination. The legacy of Cesar Chavez that is less celebrated is that of the ordinary person who ignites a cultural movement to correct the injustices that they witness in the world. And it takes extraordinary courage to stand up when the status quo is unjust. But it takes even more extraordinary conviction to persevere in the face of the challenges and violent reactions that the United Farm Workers faced with nonviolent protests. And it takes extraordinary inner resolve to keep people facing such challenges with optimism. Cesar Chavez achieved all of these things and further spurred a call to action and empowerment in the community that we still remember today. Si se puede. Through his efforts, Cesar Chavez and those who worked with him were able to bring about legislation ensuring fair wages and safer working environments for agricultural workers and many others. Moreover, he joined the chorus of voices against racial prejudice, strengthening the message of our common humanity. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley hereby proclaims March 31st, 2018 as Cesar Chavez Day. Let's give a round of applause for Cesar Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our second order of business is a presentation today for the City Council proclamation recognizing April as Moreno Valley Senior Veterans Month. And we have Alty Holcomb from Senator Ross's office who is here to present a certificate.
If we can get some members of the Senior Citizens Board and then also veterans over here.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Senator Richard Roth, it is indeed my pleasure to present this certificate of recognition to the City of Moreno Valley honoring the month of April as Senior Veterans Month. Now, we know, of course, that veterans have contributed mightily to the foundation of what truly makes America great, but they should also be honored for their past. They have served either in or during several conflicts in America's history, which include World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Gulf War, Iraq, and Afghanistan. So again, on behalf of Senator Roth, I present you Mayor Dr. Exine Gutierrez, this certificate of recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dr. Gutierrez, can you present the proclamation to Miguel Arceaniega from the Senior Citizens
We have this beautiful proclamation. And if I could have Mayor Protem Baca, you want to read it from there?
I can read it from here. Is that okay? Okay. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Recognizing Moreno Valley Senior Veterans Month, whereas the greatest natural asset of the City of Moreno Valley is the people who live in the city, which consists of a large military population due to the proximity of March Air Reserve Base. And whereas it is good and proper to recognize the courage, self-sacrifice, and distinguished valor of our senior veteran population, as well as the contributions made by senior veterans and their families to the cause of peace and freedom around the world. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim April 2018 to be Moreno Valley Senior Veterans Month in celebration of the centennial anniversary of March Air Reserve Board -- I'm sorry, March Air Reserve Base. Here tonight, we have members of our Senior Citizens Advisory Board to accept the proclamation. Mr. Chairman, Robert Snyder, and if you would like to say a few words.
I want to thank everyone for being here today, this evening. The proclamation is something that recently came up, but realizing how long our base has been here, which has been a very big part of our valley, and of course, our city, and many, many citizens here, I want to thank the men and women that have served in our country, for our country in so many different ways, over, as we were just saying, a few minutes or over many generations. Are all the vets, could I have you please rise? Just to see all of you, stand up if you could for me, please, that have served. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We have representatives from Senator Ross's office, and we have Assemblyman Ashley's office here. I want to thank them for showing up. It's a big moment in our city when we think of something 100 years old and we get to participate in it. So all of you, thank you very much for being here. What's that? Well, the VFW is here tonight. Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
And gentlemen, thank you for your service and thank you for being here tonight. That concludes the special presentations for this evening. The City Council will reconvene in about, well, at 6:00 PM.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on March 20th, 2018, at 6:01 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor Sharon Philpot from Cornerstone Christian Fellowship.
Everyone, please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could have the pastor come up? Don't have the pastor? No? Okay. All right, I'll just lead us in a prayer. Dear God, please guide us tonight as we make decisions for the city. Amen. Thank you. Real short. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not a pastor. Staff introductions, please. Oh, yeah, sorry, roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gaiba.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions.
Marshal Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanowicz, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Michelle Patterson, Economic Development Manager.
Rick Sanzamire, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kerlenowitz, Chief of Police.
Abdul Alamat, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director, Human Resources.
Matt Alonso, Director, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Okay. All right. Well, first, I just want to say thank you to the staff for all that you do, and thank you to the residents that came out tonight to this meeting. I know tonight's a very important meeting, especially what's on the agenda. And I just want to assure everyone in the audience that we respect the First Amendment, constitutional right, freedom of speech. And so, we do ask that when someone's at the podium, that you be respectful. Also, if any of the council members are speaking, to be respectful as well. We do have a decorum here in this council meeting. Finally, I ask the speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and City Council deliberation. Agenda item A5 has been removed from the agenda and will not be considered. That's one about a festival. We anticipate a lot of speakers on item E1, which is the cannabis. In order to be efficient and courteous to those in the audience, those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda, under the jurisdiction of the City Council, may speak after we vote on that item. So those wishing to speak should complete and submit, again, that golden rod speaker slip if you want to speak on the cannabis, and that's item G. The City Clerk will call three names at a time. Please make sure all remarks and questions shall be addressed to myself, the presiding officer, or to the City Council in general. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond to any questions from the podium, but we will respond during closing comments. So Madam Clerk, any, we will actually move on to consent calendar first, so that way we can get to the item. And again, the non-agenda items, so if you want to speak about things in general, that'll be after item G. So we're going to move to our joint consent calendar sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial, and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council, Community Services District, City Successor Agency, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees requests an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate action or actually motion by each agency, and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. So we'll go ahead and see if there's any items that would like to be discussed. And that one is the --
The HDL.
Okay. Any others? If you can press your button or -- Okay, so we'll start with A7, and that is Authorization to Award Contract to HDL Companies for Cannabis Consulting Services. We will have Report of Financial and Management Services. Or unless you have, do you have a question or you just want a brief report?
A brief report on that, please.
Yes. All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council Members. In December, staff issued a request for a proposal for companies to provide consulting services to conduct cannabis regulatory inspections, financial audit compliances, and investigations related to the review of applications and ongoing monitoring of cannabis-related businesses within the city. Through our Planet Bid system, a notice was sent out of the RFP, was sent to more than 200 potential vendors, and public notice was provided through the Press Enterprise. Following a review of the proposals and the completion of the interview process, staff is recommending HDL companies based on their qualifications, extensive experience in the cannabis industry. HDL is currently working with over 100 cities in California on cannabis-related projects. They bring a unique range of experience that includes ordinance review, community outreach, merit-based application development support, permitting processes, cost recovery studies, fiscal analysis, all items related to the cannabis industry. And members of their team have been instrumental in the development and permitting and regulatory programs related to the cannabis industry in states such as Colorado, Washington, and California. With that, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Marshal. Just, I have two questions. DHL will not be, won't have the authority to cite these dispensaries or any company that's part of the cannabis sales manufacturer?
Correct. They will not directly cite any entities. They will conduct inspections and compliance reviews, then they'll work with the city between code and the finance department as the overseer of the permits to make sure that they're brought back into compliance.
Okay. And secondly, the agreement that we have here, cost-wise, the first year is $167,000, and then we're talking about annual thereafter of almost $300,000. What's the difference? Why is that?
In the first year of the proposal, given the timeline here, we'll be looking at the initial applications for cannabis, but we won't see a lot of permits in that period. So the first year represents really an estimated 35 permits coming in for application, or 35 applicants coming in. As we get through that process, we'll be issuing those permits, but they may not be until next fiscal year. So that represents 26 permits in the next fiscal year.
July 1st.
Yes, after July 1st.
Of the same year.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, it's not really a question, but just more of a comment that that money is not coming out of the general fund. All of that is being recouped from the fees that we're charging for the applications.
If I may, yes, you are correct. One of the items later with item E1 includes user fees for the cannabis. Those user fees will pay for this contract, so there will be nothing coming out of the general fund. They'll be paid for by those cannabis permits.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on the consent items? And again, only the consent items.
Just one.
Okay. Can you, Rafael? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. We've got quite a freedom tonight, and that's good. Conference should be great. I want to talk about that we finally got another appointed committee member, Barbara, hopefully, that'll be approved tonight. And then we shut out number five, the full mobile truck. I'm glad that we finally got that trained out, what the rules are going to be for them, so they don't be scattered throughout the whole entire city. And I want to talk about A7. A7, the consultant, what the City of Moreno Valley, the residents, each and one of us that live in the city need to know that the consultant, if they get approved tonight, they have 33 years of experience. Like, it was mentioned, they're in 100 cities, so this group knows what to do for us, okay? What wasn't mentioned is that they will be kicking off meetings, assisting in commercial businesses, creating base practice, providing the city with technical and policy experience, assisting designs, reviewing and assisting ongoing courses, conducting compliances and financial audits, assisting with development. This is a professional company. The one thing I've learned through the planning commission, we're learning. We're learning what Colorado made their mistakes in. We're not going to make those mistakes here, Moreno Valley residents. We're going to make sure that the rules and all regulations are obeyed, because we have families, young people, we have guests that come into our city. We were going to conduct ourselves in the utmost right way we can, and we will use our chief of police to enforce our laws. This is what the staff has been working on for over a year. This is not happening in 30 days. This has been going on since 2016. Finally, it's on paper. We are going to do what's right. Yes, we are going to make a little money. Yes, we are. But we're also going to help those that need help with medical marijuana. That's important. What people don't know, that I voted against this in November, because I know what it was like. I'm not going to lie to anybody, and I ain't going to lie to myself. But I understand it better than I ever did now, especially where we got rules that need to be conducted. And I learned a lot about the marijuana medical patient and what they need. I was selfish. I didn't understand it, and I hope it passes tonight.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Rafael. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved?
Okay. Moved by Mayor Protem Baca, second by, wants to be second. Please vote. So the consent calendar is approved, 5-0. Now we'll move on to the public hearing. So questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter will be limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. So when we get to the cannabis item, it does have to be about the cannabis. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to our Sergeant at Arms Officer Brooks. So again, if you want to speak about the cannabis, go ahead and fill out the golden rod slip, and then turn it into any one of the officers. Okay, so I'll go ahead and start it off. E1, Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance. Title IX, Fee and Application Process Resolutions. And then he's going to go over the land use, and then also the process for the application and the resolutions, and we have a report of our community development. Rick Sanzamire.
Thank you, Mayor. And members of the City Council, I'd like to introduce Mark Gross, our senior planner, who's been working tirelessly on this item, to give you the staff presentation.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. A draft land use ordinance is presented to council this evening for regulation of commercial cannabis land uses in Moreno Valley. And that includes six different uses. So we're talking about cannabis dispensaries, testing, cultivation, manufacturing, microbusinesses, and distribution centers. The Title IX ordinance includes definitions, actually 14 to be exact, and they are consistent with the Title V ordinance requirements that are, the definitions that are in that document. The ordinance also provides specific zoning districts for 26 cannabis businesses, a conditional use permit requirement for all of those 26 uses. It includes general development standards. It also includes land use buffers that are consistent with the state requirements. It includes specific use standards, as well as grounds for revocation of cannabis land uses if certain conditions of this conditional use permit are not being met. Now, if the ordinance is approved as written this evening, five different land use districts and 26 conditionally permitted cannabis uses are included in this ordinance. And I want to run through the numbers and where the actual uses would be provided in the individual zoning district. So when we start out with dispensaries, we're looking at a maximum of 10 that we're proposing that may be allowed in three separate zoning districts. That would be community commercial, neighborhood commercial, business park, and business park mixed use. For testing, there would be a maximum of two that would, that we're proposing to be allowed within three different zoning districts. That would be business park, business park mixed use, and light industrial zones. For cultivation and manufacturing, a maximum of five, so there'd be five cultivation and five manufacturing uses each, that may be allowed within three different zoning districts. That would be business park, business park mixed use, and light industrial. For microbusinesses, which we had a lot of questions, or just about what a microbusiness is, that's typically a combination of three or four cannabis activities, three of four cannabis activities, I should say. And those possible activities would be manufacturing, cultivation, some sort of retail dispensary use, and distribution. And for that particular land use, we're looking at a maximum of two that would be allowed within the business park mixed use zone. And then finally, for distribution centers, there is a maximum of two that would be allowed in any of the five zoning districts that are allowing for cannabis land uses. So that would be neighborhood commercial, community commercial, business park, business park mixed use, and light industrial. What I want to do at this point is turn your attention over to the screen. This actually, all of these items that we're going to show are actually part of attachments to the staff report. And these maps have been included in the report to show zoning buffers for commercial cannabis activities that are allowed under the ordinance. And I want to start by showing this zoning map, and we're going to go from very broad terms to very specific terms as we go through some of these maps. This map happens to be the city zoning ordinance map, and so this is depicting all of the different zones that are included in the city. And you can see all the individual colors that are associated with those zones. This next map is actually providing land and potential land, and it's showing the zoning of community and neighborhood commercial areas. And those particular areas could allow for dispensaries and distribution type uses, and we'll kind of get into that as we go through the, these maps. This next map is again, just a kind of a broad term map that shows zoning, in this case, a business park, business park mixed use, and light industrial. That's typically from the cannabis arena, going to be looking at testing, cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing type uses. Now for this next map, it's getting a little bit more specific. This actually is showing some of the commercial and showing the kind of a mixture of the commercial, retail, and the industrial uses. So this is actually providing for acres and providing for potential acres and acre areas where all the 26 cannabis businesses could locate. But I want to mention that this particular map doesn't factor in all of the requirements of the zoning, of what you would include in the ordinance. So that would include the buffers and all of those items. So when you get into this next map, this next map actually does factor in all of the items that are included in the ordinance. So you're seeing with the bubbled areas, all of those areas are showing where the buffers are. And when we talk about buffers, we're talking about 600-foot buffers that are consistent with the state regulations for sensitive land uses. And those land uses would include K through 12, public and private schools. They would include daycare centers, youth centers, and arcades. And when you look at this, just to point out a few facts that are on this map, when you kind of calculate all of the areas and the different cannabis land uses, there are approximately 630-- 632 acres of land that would be existing for dispensary uses, 663 acres for cultivation, manufacturing, and testing. There would be 44 acres for micro businesses and 1,251 acres for distribution centers. Now, an additional 200 acres of dispensary sites are possible when you factor in the specific plans. And this particular map actually does factor in the specific plans. And again, when we're talking about specific plans, it would have to be like zoning. So the zoning would have to be what's allowed under the ordinance. And would also have to include specific plans that defer to the underlying municipal code standards as far as land uses go. And so we did not include any of the specific plans that are not deferring to the municipal code on any of these maps because they have individual permitted use tables that are different than what is included in Title IX, for the most part. And there would need to be a specific plan amendment that would have to be provided for that, for those specific plans to allow any new uses to come in to those plans. Now, on February 22nd, the Planning Commission recommended approval of Title IX cannabis ordinance to City Council by a vote of three to one. If the council approves the ordinance this evening, it would become law 30 days after its second reading. And I do want to mention that there is, there was appropriate notice for the public hearing that was provided in the local newspaper. And I do want to run through, we did get a number of calls from the notice and approximately 25 calls, I think is what I've gathered up for the City Council meeting itself. We had some others at the Planning Commission meeting as well. And some of the primary public questions that were provided on the telephone were just general zoning questions for cannabis land uses and whether their particular parcel, if the ordinance was approved this evening, would be allowed in, you know, as part of the cannabis ordinance. Also, there was discussion on use restrictions and just some general items such as when licenses would be available. And basically, almost all of the calls that were received in, with this ordinance were pretty much in favor of the ordinance, from what I could tell by the calls that I've received. So that concludes staff's report on Title IX land use ordinance. The second part of the presentation this evening will be provided by Marshall Ironman of the Financial and Management Services Department, and that would be a discussion on permit fee resolution information. Marshall?
Thank you, Michael. Marshall?
Thank you so much. As was mentioned, the other part of this recommends to the City Council that we establish certain fees to recover costs of providing services associated with the applications and the permits for commercial cannabis businesses. And the other part is to establish the initial application procedures for these permits and the process that we go through. Based on California statutes, the city of Moreno Valley can recover cost for our services. We've developed these fees to hopefully recover as much cost as possible within the law. But some of these proposed fees for commercial cannabis activities include the initial application fee, which is estimated at $9,551, and an annual permit fee of $58,356. This annual permit fee is structured and based on projected costs, including but not limited to the annual operational audits, which we're looking at to five a year, along with an annual financial audit, and then ongoing inspections and monitoring by our consultants as well as the city. This also includes daily monitoring with police hours. It's 11 hours a day, seven days a week throughout the year, so that we have ongoing monitoring there and support from code services when there's violations and other things that we need to decide or go through on that end. With regards to the application process, the proposed resolution and initial application procedures provides the proposed process for the applications. It lays out the steps to allow for the application to be submitted, reviewed, and addresses the process for the final award of those permits. With the approval of the actions this evening by the City Council, the city may be able to open the initial application procedure on April 2nd, and we'd be closing that window on May 11th and then moving forward with the review of those applications. And that completes my component.
Let me just get out of this part here. Thank you, Marshall. I just want to commend the staff that they've been working on this for quite some time. And then I know prior, you know, the former city attorney was also working on that. We had some study sessions on it as well. So I just wanted to commend you guys on all your hard work, especially on all this. So we'll go ahead and start with questions, council questions, and we'll just do one round. So if we could keep it just to questions, not comments, we will get to deliberation. So you'll be able to see your comments at that time. Okay, so we'll start with Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. And this question, I believe, would be for you, Marshall. In terms of revenue, and I know you can just give me rough numbers or approximations, but can you run down from all the uses, number one being the one that gives us the most revenue in terms of taxes, and then running through to which one gives us the least amount of revenue?
I apologize this evening as we're discussing the fees and items. When we look at revenue, the fees that we presented tonight are only cost recovery, so there are no revenues proposed within those. As we look towards the future, if cannabis is put into place, we'll be coming back to council in April to start the discussion on the tax measures. We'll be able to give you a little bit more detail on that. I know we had some initial assumptions, but we want to see the feedback that we're getting from our surveys, come back with that in April.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I want to shout out to staff. You guys have been doing a great job on this. Really appreciate that. Oh, I have one question. I don't know if it's Marshall or Mr. Gross, but the 600-foot buffer, you said it's the state guidelines. Can anyone on this council request or change to under that 600 at any time?
That's correct. The 600 is part of the state regulations, and that's what we used as a guideline approach for the four different uses that we looked at. I think the ordinance does allow, or the state ordinance does allow for other types of buffers if you want to provide other buffers.
But I think he's asking less, right? Is that what you're asking?
What I'm asking for is can this be changed to less feet than the 600 at any time?
Let me answer. Rick Sansomire, Acting Community Development Director. The simple answer is yes. The state does defer to the local agencies if they want to establish a different buffer. Some agencies we did the research on are electing to try and put in a bigger buffer, but we do believe from our understanding of the regulations that it depends on the jurisdiction if you want to make it less. They are pretty strong with regard to their consideration of the 600-foot buffer around schools and daycare centers and those sorts of things. That would be the only thing that we were trying to make sure that ours was consistent with.
Okay. Martin, did you? Add another question.
Okay, that's fine.
So what you're saying is that these sensitive facilities, that if we wanted to change them, it would be hard for us to do that or difficult for us to do that? Is that?
It wouldn't be difficult for you to do it. I also wanted to address your initial question, said at any time. The answer to that question is no, you can't do it at any time. What you need to do is you need to consider that regulation when you adopt the ordinance. If you want to change that regulation later, you would have to go through an amendment process because this is going to be codified within our municipal code. So if you have thoughts on a different buffer that you'd like to establish for any particular use, we should discuss that now, give you the pros and cons, or answer the questions that you might need, so that you guys are making a decision because the code can't just be amended one meeting after the next. It has to go through this.
Mayor, Mayor Pretend, members of the council, our approach as staff is recommending that you remain consistent with the buffers that the state calls for. If your discussion indicates that you want to look at something at smaller buffers, we would ask you to give us a little bit of time to do some research. This is still an emerging body of law, and we want to make sure that everything we do is completely by the book and would withstand any challenges. So to move forward on the timetable that you've asked us to do, we strongly recommend sticking with the 600-foot buffers as is presented here.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. And Councilmember, actually, Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Thank you, Mayor.
Council questions?
If you can go back to map four. I can't see what you have up there.
Map four, right.
Is that map four? Okay. What are the pinky zones? And what does it mean by specific plans and allowable zones?
Well, I think what is being provided under the pink areas, it looks like it's specific plan areas that are deferring to the municipal code standards. So I think as we discussed before, that we added specific plans into the mix because anything that defers over to the municipal code, if we approve an ordinance this evening, would allow for any of those zones that we allow cannabis uses in to go move forward. So if they're not deferring to the code, then it's going to be a specific plan amendment that would be allowed. But that's really what the pink, I think, is showing is just...
Let me see if I can be very specific about the pink zone. I'm assuming what you're referring to, the pink zone, on this map, the second color from the bottom on the legend is kind of a pinkish-purple or lavender color. That's referring to specific Plan 193, which is part of the Moreno Valley Ranch, specific plan area, and that's the commercial center that allows for commercial uses. It defers to commercial uses. So what would be allowed there would be the dispensaries or the distribution type uses in the two boxes that you see on the lower part of the map. That purple area that is along Sunnymeat Boulevard is deferring to the specific Plan 204, which in that specific plan has a designation called VCR, which is Village Commercial Residential. But in that Village Commercial Residential designation, it defers to Neighborhood Commercial Zones. And because we are allowing dispensaries and distribution also in the Neighborhood Commercial Zone, those are the types of uses that would be allowed in that purple area. So I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so that's the pinky one is the VCR?
If we can have the audience remain quiet, please.
That's the VCR?
The one along Sunnymeat Boulevard?
Yes.
The one that looks more purple is designated as VCR, which defers to the Neighborhood Commercial zoning districts in our code. And then the more pink area along Sunnymeat Boulevard is also deferring to the same specific plan, but to the, within that specific plan is a commercial zone. So that purple area and the pink area along Sunnymeat Boulevard will allow for the same type of uses for dispensaries or distribution is the recommendation.
Okay. And the gray zone next to, I guess, by Ironwood and Day on the southwest, southeast corner?
The gray zones that appear on the map are those parcels that are touched or affected by the buffer. So if you were in a zone that would otherwise allow it, but because you're within 600 feet of a sensitive receptor, that buffer touches that parcel and it grays it out. So it makes that entire parcel ineligible for any cannabis activity.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, let me, okay. Councilmember Gaiaba?
Thank you. I think Martin answered questions you'll be able to answer. Does something have to go to the public as a vote? A vote of the public on this whole issue? I'm going to take it piece by piece.
None of what is being proposed...
Not tonight. I know that the licensing and the documentation and all that doesn't. But the actual sale of the marijuana in the city of Moreno Valley, does that have to go to the voters?
No, it does not.
No, it does not. So we could begin, as soon as this gets into place, you could begin to sell licenses and begin selling marijuana in the city of Moreno Valley. Would it be the tax revenues that you would generate? I think, Marshall, that's the one that you might want. That has to go to the voters?
The ballot measure would be for tax. If the council wished to tax this activity, that would need to be voted on by the people.
I just wanted to delineate the two differences and what they're doing, because you could probably be selling marijuana but not necessarily making any money off of it for tax-wise, but be able to get the money back for the police and the other things that we need to do. So the third question is, if it does go to the public for the tax, will that, that would probably be on the November ballot? Am I correct?
That is what is anticipated. That's correct.
And then finally, what happens if it fails?
Then there would be no tax.
So we would get no revenue in the form of a tax base from this?
Well, you would get no revenue from a city tax. There's still, the activity would still be taxed under state law, sales taxes and other applicable taxes. Share of that would go to the city.
And, Marshall, what's the, have you guys anticipated what the sales tax is supposed to be for, for both of?
At this time, we have some preliminary items. Again, I kind of want to defer to the April so that we can make sure we come forward with a clear message. We can look at the potential tax rates and revenues that we're going to have at that point.
And then, just for clarification, as far as, okay, hold on, we'll wait. Okay, so as far as clarification here, the landowner, just to make it clear for the community, it's not that we're allowing all, you know, all over the place or anything like that, the landowner, or they have to own the building, correct? Does somebody want to answer that?
The, I can answer.
Rick?
The application for a conditional use permit would require authorization from the underlying property owner. If they authorize a tenant to come in with an application, we would take in an application from the tenant only if they come in with the authorization from the underlying property owner. That's for the land use permit that we're talking about this evening.
So the tenant will still have to get that approval from the landowner? Okay? Or the landowner himself? Okay? That wants to do it?
The landowner himself could also be the applicant, yes.
Yeah. Okay. We'll go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing, and we'll go ahead and hear public testimony. So we'll go ahead and have three minutes for each speaker. Madam Clerk, go ahead and call three at a time. And then if we can have the three lined up and ready?
Wayne Maniglia, Andy Minor, Kendrick Iglesias.
How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk? For the golden rods?
We have 13.
Okay.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Sorry I couldn't come for the first City Council meetings and the draft ordinance and everything else, but that's great. Here tonight to talk about the actual zoning, we currently have a facility in the community commercial area. It's a very large facility. It's in a zone that is here that's pragmatic to what the business developing here for the city is. It's actually one of, I would think, is the best for a micro license within the city. Unfortunately, it sits in the community commercial as opposed to the business park and light industrial. This particular building has been abandoned for probably five years within the community, and it has an abundance of homeless people in the area. And this particular location, as we would be doing remodeling and gentrifying, as the quote of the word these days is, for this particular strip mall, it would be such a beneficial aspect for the city itself because it clearly does depict how a micro license should be done. And there's only two for the area, so my main concern here is to hopefully give more information and allow for this to maybe be amended because the amount of revenue and also for the safety and for the community to get education, as a gentleman mentioned earlier, to come to a facility that's 30,000 square feet that used to be a local market. And now for somebody to see how a real dispensary is ran and how it shall be done. They're not called dispensaries anymore, by the way. They're called retail. Lori Ajax and the cannabis peer now has made it a retail. This is a retail business, education for the community, prospering for the community, giving them the best cannabis that's available, medical and recreation, but not only just cannabis, but CBD. An actual, having a place where people can learn about, and people who can't afford meds, that want meds, can actually get them there. And they can see research and development there at the facility. It gives them the best of every aspect of cannabis by having all five aspects of what is legal... It gives them the best of every aspect of cannabis by having all five aspects of what is legal in the state of California. As with the consulting groups that you're bringing in, they will know and see that when you have all five under one roof, done the right way, secure in an environment that the community can be proud of, it's gonna be a destination point and an education point, and we would love to have this to be handled. And it would, it would, it would just be elated for the community, they would just have a place. It's not in a business area where they have to go the opposite way. It's away from the schools, it clearly meets every zone. And it's a, but part of our, um, model. In another city, we have several licenses too in the nearby city, and our group as a whole has been doing cannabis for over twenty years. A lot of people talk about that they've been doing it and how they've been doing it. We actually have been in this business, we're not new, we're learning, and we wanna help the community. And as soon as taxation is put in, and we'd rather have a count put on the side prior to when you have your ordinance put in place for it, that we would have, actually have that money there in place as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Andy Minor, Kendrick Iglesias, Hansel Urbina.
You could please line up?
Mayor, city council members, thanks for taking, uh, time to listen to us. Like Wayne was saying, our, uh, facility is, uh, we hope for a micro license, but it is community commercial. Uh, we were hoping for, uh, to be able to have a micro license in that facility that would allow us to manufacture, make, uh, edibles because it is a, a former grocery store that has, you know, kitchen facilities that would be revitalized. And a couple of the, I understand the logic behind the zones for manufacturing cultivation, and some of the restrictions or concessions, I think, might help. If, uh, we could get the micro license in the community commercial would be to restrict the manufacturing to non-volatile, non-combustible, which would make it a, a safer process as well as limiting the, um, if it became an issue, to limit the cultivation not allowed in the community commercial zoning. Then we would be able to have a mi- micro license that would allow non-volatile, non-combustible manufacturing, edibles, processing, packaging, distribution and retail. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy, and I, I did take a look at that map, and so I'll be bringing it up during deliberation. Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Kendrick Iglesias, Hansel Urbina and Ryan Gilbert.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, good evening, anyone else. I just want to have reinsurance from the city that if anyone in high school who is caught with cannabis will be punished with full estate after law. Because I remember when I was in high school at Valley View, that sometimes I would go into a restroom and it would smell like someone did something in there, and it would be very unpleasant because when I was doing the restroom. That, I just want to reassure the city that they will take punishing anyone.
Oh, yeah, anyone under twenty-one.
Thank you.
I mean eighteen or whatever the law is. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening.
City hall members, uh, my name is Hansel Urbina. Just wanted to have the council consider my findings for Moreno Valley's comprehensive zoning regulations and use of land motion two zero one eight dash zero nine and ordinance number nine two nine. So essentially, uh, the primary issue that I've found in my personal experience when driving through the designated cannabis zones that were announced on February twenty-eighth is that a majority of the land that's being proposed is unusable or, or simply not viable. And what I mean by that is that a majority of the properties are more corporate entities that own the properties that are not receptive towards these businesses. Or, for example, are, are development opportunities, like four corners that are undeveloped with parcels that are in the millions of dollars. So, uh, un-realistic for the small operator. So that's my, my one finding, just based on driving through the territory that was announced February twenty-second. Another just concern that I have or question is that when I drove through these areas, I, I found a couple of businesses that were currently operating in the viable territory. So I'm not sure if there's gonna be, you know, a, a washing out type of those businesses or how you're gonna proceed, but some businesses are already in those zones. I'm not sure how, how those conversations are going with the landlords, but when I speak to them, they're not permissible for the most part. So just my simple two cents.
We'll have, um, our, uh, city attorney respond to that towards, uh, towards the end, if you could stay around. Okay?
Martín Cabrera, oh, I'm sorry, Ryan Gilbert, Martín Cabrera Senior, Anthony Hicks and Ola.
You could please line up? Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, how you guys doing?
Good.
First of all, I'd like to commend you guys, commend the city and all who were involved in creating the application process. Uh, this has been the best streamlined application process that I've seen thus far. Also, the city's doing a great job on executing this process in a professional and timely manner. Just a quick little background on me, my name is Ryan Gilbert. I've lived in Moreno Valley for over twenty-four years. I've worked in this great city for over ten years, my family lives here, I own a home here, I plan on raising my son here. I currently am the Director of Operations at West Coast Cannabis Club in Cathedral City, California. We are a fully licensed state, a fully local and licensed state dispensary. We have been operating for over a year, and we thrive to be the standard of what this industry should be. Like I said before, I've worked in the city for over ten years as a bartender. I would, I would love to bring the cannabis industry and be a great example in this community. With, but with the bans in place that were here, we knew, we knew that we, we weren't able to operate in Moreno Valley, which, which, which led us to go to Cathedral City to operate fully legally. Now that Moreno Valley is moving forward with cannabis, we wanna take advantage of this opportunity. Um, enough about me and my goals. Um, I'm here to give a different perspective on cannabis. I'm here to offer a bit of insight to the operational side of cannabis. A lot of people have concerns about the crime, illegal cons, illegal consumption and negative effects that come with the industry. Most of these effects are usually, or most of these topics are usually debunked once cannabis is regulated. I know taxes, tax is a huge tax and growth and economic growth and is a huge benefit to the city, but the people who benefit the most from this are the people who are getting medical benefits from this. The people who come in and say, "I haven't slept in, I haven't slept well in two years." I'm thank you, I, I, I'm glad you guys are here to provide this for me. We, 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 every day I, I get a chance to witness someone being happy with what we, what we can do for them. The, the best benefit I can say that I give to people is a better quality of life. It's, aside from all the tax money, all the economic growth, you know, people just wanting to use it recreationally, the medical benefit is by far the biggest benefit out there. I've, I've yet to see any increase in criminal activity because of the legalization of cannabis. Um, I've only seen nothing but positive benefits from each city. Like I said before, I've, I'm in Cathedral City now. I've spoke with numerous police officers and none of them have anything bad to say about this industry, which I think speaks value to a lot when people say, "Hey, this industry's gonna bring in crime and corruption" or whatever it may be. I think we've had nothing but a positive impact, in, impact on our, on our, uh, community. That'll be it.
Thank you, Gilbert. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Martin Cabrera Senior?
Anthony Hicks.
Good, good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me here on a, uh, cannabis thing. My major concern is about education to the people, about consuming it. I mean, it's, it's not just giving it to the public, like here, you can buy it. Here's, this is yours in exchange. I wanted to see education, especially for, for the youth, because this is the cannabis thing, or whatever you wanna name it, is a key for, uh, an addiction. You know, it's very addictive from my point of view. But I wanted to see education to the youth. I mean, it's, many people in here is looking just at a sign of dollars. I wanna see the sign of education, right? So I don't wanna see the population polluted by this stuff. I wanna see the people progressing and open-minded as well. Okay? So not just the sign of pesos here or, or dollars. It doesn't count, the future is the kids, and the kids are very exposed to that stuff. So if you can hear that, please do something. Thank you.
And I do wanna mention, I believe that in the application, uh, there is a section for community benefits, so we will be asking, um, companies to really tell us, you know, how do they plan to benefit the community? And I think that's probably a part where they can put in there about education to the youth. Okay, thank you.
How you doing, council member, Mayor Pro Tem, council members? Um, I just wanna stop by and just tell you guys, thank you so much for having me, and I wanna tell you, the staff, thank you so much for putting together and doing your due diligence on making the plans and the ordinance together. I really do think that the city needs legal cannabis because for one, it's gonna help out the growth of the city. And I honestly do believe that by doing this, 'cause I, I even read in the ordinance, or excuse me, the plans, that they said if, excuse me, if we, uh, little nervous, excuse me. Okay, I've read in the ord, uh, the planning that if you are going to become a worker, like basically a bartender or anything like that, you can basically further your education. So one thing I love about this business is that it's gonna actually help further people's education. So I wanna tell you guys, thank you for that, because a lot of people are just saying it's just dollars, it's not gonna help this community, but it is. I just wanna tell you guys, thank you so much and continue, um, with the, uh, planning. So say for instance, if they're saying if it's ten, let's keep it at ten. If it's, uh, micro business, if it's only two, let's just have it as that. And not to shorten up the distance too much for, um, the daycares and the schools, 'cause we do care about the kids, but, so we don't wanna shorten it too much. And another thing is that I wanna make sure that we bring in class. I don't wanna see RVs parked off of Sunnymead or anything like that. And, you know, it, it doesn't make the city look good. So I'd rather bring professional people in and let's do this the correct way, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Anthony. Okay, Ola?
Rafael Burguerras and Kyle Turley.
If we can have them line up? Is Ola still here? Okay, is that the one that exited? Okay. Okay, all right, we'll go with Rafael.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, council members, staff, residents and our guests. For those that didn't get an opportunity to really watch the process, I say go to February twenty-second, twenty eighteen, to the Planning Commission video. It explains everything in detail, how this came about. The staff took a lot of time to show the commissioners how important, what, what they were doing in planning to keep this city safe. And for those that do go there, you'll learn a lot, 'cause I did. This is why I can change my mind and to know that our city will be safe if everybody follows the rules, and I know there'll be some that won't. And I hope they get caught in our city. So we can set an example that Moreno Valley are going to obey all the laws. 'Cause I just heard speakers before me, professional men, professional men that have been in the business for twenty years, of what they're gonna do for the city. Okay? Now, if everyone went to their agenda, and I recommend that you signed up so you can get the same information that everyone got in this room, there are the rules. There are the rules. The rules are right here, from page one hundred and sixty-two to one eighty-three. These are the rules that will safeguard us. Everyone that gets an application will know the rules. Moreno Valley, we are protecting you. I know there are people that are concerned about something new, but we're learning. And I'd rather start from the bottom up with hard rules than let people get away with it. Okay? The other thing I like about the, what I read is that we're not going to sell alcohol in these facilities. Marijuana and alcohol, I know that's not a good combination. So I'm glad that we're not gonna sell alcohol in these buildings at all. I would like on page one seventy-eight, number six, that we go from twenty to fifty feet. It's like smoking a cigarette right next door. In other words, that's twenty feet. I'm right here, so somebody can smoke in their car or outside of someone else's business, the marijuana. We need to extend that to at least fifty feet or outside of the plaza. Go home. Honestly, go home. We, I bet you everybody here at least one time seen somebody smoking in their car at the light. Okay? We don't need that. So twenty feet should be thirty or fifty. Move it away, just like a buffer. Six hundred feet, move it away, so we can protect those that are around us that are shopping. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael.
Kyle Turley, Christopher Henry, Roy Blackert.
Good evening, Kyle.
Good evening. Great to be here.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Um, my name's Kyle Turley, grew up here at Moreno Valley, uh, Valley View High School alumni. Um, had the opportunity to see this city grow since nineteen, what, eighty-five? Uh, when we moved here from Washington State. Uh, my father, a truck driver, uh, was one of five kids. Attended Valley View High School, attended Canyon Springs High School my freshman year so I could wrestle with Coach Rhodey. Then went back to Valley View, uh, for the rest of my high school years because of Dan Garola. And some might know him in here as well. I'll be inducted into the Valley View Hall of Fame here coming up here this season, hope everybody makes it out. And the great late Leo Brohard. I decided to play football my senior year of high school. I didn't play football till then, unfortunately, uh, but fortunately, uh, to what we know now and understand about cannabis, um, and understand about the game of football. I received a disease, I've been diagnosed with Alzheimer's at forty-two years old. Um, this is quite difficult to deal with, um, yet I've found amazing answers in this plant. Uh, this plant has saved my life for the last three years. Uh, out of fourteen homes, it's the first home I've not ripped a door off a hinge, punched a hole in a wall, fought with my wife, embarrassed myself in front of friends and family. And I cannot say enough about what I have personally experienced through the cannabis plant. That being said, I would like to commend the city council, uh, for their leadership uh, in taking Moreno Valley from being the place where everybody goes to buy drugs, um, because that's what my uncle said when we moved here. And that's what's happening right now, if everyone goes outside and looks at what's going on in our city. That's why I live down the road off Van Buren and Riverside with Troy Percival, in the nice neighborhoods over there with cops roaming around and not a bunch of crime. I know what this city's council's intentions are and appreciate each and every one of you uh, that have put forth the efforts into, uh, really sorting this out because I know truly what this plant and this plan will do for our city. It will revitalize our city correctly, as the funds will be there to do it, will allow the police, as my father went on from being a truck driver to now retired police chief out of Washington State and saw this firsthand, to bringing back our community. There is no doubt about it. It has saved my life, it continues to save my other friends' lives as I introduce this plant to them and educate them on how to use this plant. So I would urge that the city council do reinvest taxes into parks, fields and education on why it is important, and I thank you once again for allowing this opportunity.
Thank you, Kyle.
Christopher Henry, Roy Blackert, Alfie Hernandez.
Good evening, staff, council, Mayor Pro Tem, mayor, appreciate you having me here today. Um, I'm a representative of SC four, Southern California Cannabis Chamber of Commerce. Moreover that, um, I'm a resident of the city for the last fifteen years. And, um, for the last fifteen years as well, I have been in the cannabis industry. I have built, developed, designed and built countless dispensaries. Um, I work with Wyatt up in San, in San Francisco to put some of the security protocols together for dispensaries entering, exiting, things of that sort. Um, and to see it actually come back to my hometown, to Moreno Valley, um, it's a very satisfying feeling, it's a good feeling, it's a great feeling. I applaud the staff and council for, um, putting something in place and working towards responsible regulation. Um, what I would like to say today is, in regards to dispensaries primarily, um, dispensaries as a whole, um, are helpful to jobs for society, uh, for, 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 for the constituents in the city, of course, and as well as that to the members, um, of the collective that consume cannabis. The benefits to it is monumentous. Um, I, I can't, I don't even have to comment on it because we've seen the, 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 the statements that we've seen... Uh, I I can't, I don't even have to comment on it because we've seen the 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 statements and we've seen what it does for people. Um, what I wanna talk to you guys about today primarily is the number of dispensaries, uh, allotted in the city. Ten to thirteen dispensaries would be a good number of dispensaries, primarily being on the security side of things. When you have a city as sized as Moreno Valley, two hundred and six plus thousand, um. Residents that live here, you run into the risk of having dispensaries overcrowded, what we've seen and what we've done in other cities is. We calculate the number of dispensaries right around fifteen thousand to twenty thousand residents to one dispensary. That put Moreno Valley around thirteen dispensaries, um, you wanna keep the number of dispensaries at a good number primarily because. Of security risk, uh, there's a a high risk. When you have, when you have a dispensary and you have people entering and exiting the facility. Each dispensary sees an average of about five hundred to seven hundred people a day. Um, once we start to narrow down those dispensaries, the illegal dispensaries. Those numbers go up to about a thousand to fifteen hundred people per day, to get people in and out of those facilities becomes a security risk. And it becomes a risk to the public, to the personal in there and to the staff. Um, I urge you to consider more dispensaries within the city. Um, to provide safe access to the people, after all, that is what we are trying to do and that's what the state of California has. Done throughout the years, la- over the last twenty years. Um, thank you for having me here again and I appreciate your time.
Thank you Chris.
Roy Blackert, Alfie Hernandez, Bridgette Alonso.
Bet you're all glad to see me.
Good evening.
Uh, first off with the fees, uh, I did have some concerns. Uh, I think for all six categories, having the same fee where you're only supposed to get cost recovery, probably needs to be looked at. Uh, second question on the zoning part, uh, and I did ask this question and industrial property was specifically left out. That's a more intense use, I think that should be included in. Because I don't see the logic in in using properties that are downgraded. Or you know, that are less intent zoning for for possible projects, so I'd like to see industrial properties included. In where business park and and other areas are, let the free market work. All across the board, I would say, even if you want to limit the total facilities. Have it where you have some discretion to do it, because we've heard about micro businesses and a lot of things. Say maybe you wanna put six dispensaries in and six micro businesses to service it, under the current ordinance, you can't do that. There might be some advantages to do the micro business and set yourself apart. So I think the overall ordinance needs some latitude in it, letting the free market work will. Ultimately give you the best opportunity, let the people that have done the industry make the decisions for you. Because you have lots of checks and balances, you have the CUP process, every, every business has to come before the planning commission. And ultimately under the authority of the council, so there's plenty of checks and balances, there will not be, uh, you know, uh. There, I I think there's plenty of that, plus the zoning of the property is another checks and balances, it just can't be anywhere. Tax breaks in the black market. If you overtax it and there's a bill by Assemblyman Lish, uh, Lackey and another person. They're proposing to drop the tax from fifteen to eleven percent specifically to allow the legal businesses in. Not strengthen the black market, if you overtax it with what we have, and I can go into details later. You will strengthen the black market and you will, you will not, you you will not have the legal businesses get a foothold in. That's a very important point, the benefits come from the jobs and the economic opportunity in that. That's ultimately where you will get your tax revenue, you will, you will kill an industry because I have said this many times. Show me the society that's taxed themselves to prosperity, has never happened. The only way to prosperity is to let the free market work. So it built the greatest country in the world that we're living in, take those principles, make it work for Moreno Valley.
Thank you.
Alfie Hernandez, Bridgette Alonso.
Shade Awad.
Good evening staff, good evening staff, thank you all for your hard work in putting this, uh, ordinance together. What I'd like to discuss is basically the startup costs and the economic impact it will have on the end user. Startup costs, I've heard, uh, application fee about nine thousand dollars. I've heard, uh, licensing fee fifty-eight thousand dollars. Why is it that I notice that cities that are in desperate need of revenue are using this program and raping it? I remember when this program was just used for the sick. The elderly, the disabled, but it seems like cities that need revenue desperately just wanna rape this program and. Basically disqualify everyone who's trying to get medicine. The fact of the matter is your end user are elderly people, sick people, people who need this medicine. If at the business level, you're putting up the startup costs at a very high level, and that's just at the municipal level. Let's talk about the state level, what do you think the end product cost is gonna be? This product, this program is gonna crash and burn before it even gets off its feet because the black market's gonna get. What it wanted and then some, so let's be smart. Let the free market enterprise do its job, get your revenue through employment. Through business attraction, instead of taxing businesses. Because let me tell you, businesses are not gonna come, and if they're gonna come, they're gonna go away very quickly because the end user is gonna go back to the street. And that is fact. So let's be smart and put together this taxing fee, startup costs. And let's not burn this wonderful program before it even starts, and that's, that's the reality of it. I understand revenue is king, but taxing yourself to revenue success is not where it's gonna happen, thank you very much you all.
The last three speakers are Bridgette Alonso, Shade Awad and Luis Palomares.
Hello, thank you everybody, my name is Bridgette Alonso and I was wondering with the retail stores. Are they're gonna be able to have treatments, CBD treatments for people with cancer, people who suffer anxiety? And that's a good time to be able to educate the people that do come in, what is the take on that?
I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll address it right after your comments.
Okay, thank you, oh, just one more thing, I did have a lady that I used to work on for a year and a half, she had stomach cancer. And I went every Sunday to work on her, and to see my work and her partaking in the cannabis. And that year and a half that she had, it gave her a quality of lifestyle, and that's what we need to think about. For the people who are sick and the time that they have here is their quality of life, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker please. And then, uh, Luis Palomares, uh, you'll be the last speaker.
Hello, board, uh, my name is Shade Awad, I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for twenty-eight years, I went to school here, um.
Oh, can you speak into the microphone please?
Sure, my name is Shade Awad, I've I've, uh, been a Moreno Valley resident for twenty-eight years. Uh, never in my wildest dreams would I ever think that the day, uh, cannabis. Or retail location would be here upon us, but the reality is the reality. Um, Paris already has their medical shops, uh, today I went to a three and a half hours session with the, uh, county of supervisors. And that's what they were talking about also, how many they're gonna allow, when they're gonna allow, the only thing that I wanna, you know, reiterate to everybody is enforcement. So if you're allowing ten to thirteen, twelve, five, whatever the number is, if it costs the person to open up ten thousand dollars, let's say. Fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of, uh, fees, CUP fees, engineering fees, opening them up, um. Opening up that door, you know what I mean, uh, all all them fees are great, but who benefits from that? Are we gonna benefit or is the illegal shop gonna benefit, cause a legal shop doesn't have to pay anything? So when I go to the DMV and I gotta pay my fees, and I gotta pay my registration, I gotta pay my insurance, and the guy next to me doesn't pay anything. Who's benefiting, so the main thing is, you might get that money, which is great, but please enforce the illegal shops that are around. And and they shouldn't get a benefit that, hey, they're a legal shop, they're in the city or they did that and here you go, here's a license, we're rewarding you. For doing the wrong thing, give them time to come out of the shadows, or tell them, hey, you are in a zone, let us know the heads up, but if you're giving ten, ten to thirteen licenses. Which is a fair number, it's every twenty thousand gets a license, that's fair, but to make the shop that's gonna be legal. Spend a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at least to open the door, y- the black market is gonna benefit. Um, and then also permit and tax and it's all great, uh, but the reality is, who needs the, who needs the medical marijuana? Is the people that definitely need it, not the recreational, so if you're gonna tax away for recreational, that's fine, if the person wants to party, that's on them. But if somebody needs the medical marijuana, they shouldn't get taxed the same rate as as a recreational person. Um, and then you know, good business is good business, I'm pretty sure the majority of everybody here, uh, maybe. At least thirty percent has has a business, and you know, after gross revenue, if you make seven percent, six percent of your gross sales profit. You're you're dancing all day, but if you're charging me ten percent to or fifteen percent to run my business. And you charge me a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do a business, it's not business, so the big people will survive. And the little people will be gone, and I don't think that's what Moreno Valley wants to do, I think Moreno Valley wants to keep it a a fair playing field. And you know, and when I'm looking, it says, you know, hire a Moreno Valley, uh, resident. Uh, provide for a Moreno Valley resident, a Moreno Valley business, a Moreno Valley, and that's what we wanna do. So anybody that does it, you know, please give a Moreno Valley resident the primary, you know, chance before a big business comes in.
Thank you, thank you Shade. Luis Palomares?
Luis Palomares, community activist, okay, I'm here to talk about the students, as far as, uh, one of the. People earlier was talking about students, well, I think, you know, in the schools, they're gonna take care of business, they're gonna educate our students. They're gonna make sure they don't get their hands on this, and like I said, they got their hands on everything else already, you know, so. Uh, they're not gonna have access to this, if they do, it's just like they have access to everything else already. I I'm, yeah, we do have to educate our students, now that we're bringing this into our c- our community here, we should and. You know, it's, hey, I'm an advocate for students, so that's, that's, uh, suggestion I make and I think the, uh, council's already. Looking into all of that, as far as the staff, I think they're doing, doing a very good job, as far as the fees, I think they're pretty high, like a a couple of, um. Other, um, speakers were talking about, how is a little guy gonna get in when all the fees are so much? And as far as, you know, the medicine part of it, wow, it's great, it, you know, it, this is. Well, you know, the pharmaceutical don't want this to happen, they'll get, they'll get their hands in there, you know, sooner or later, but. Right now they don't want it to happen, because it's medicine, people are are using this instead of all the other medicines. And the the medicine part of it shouldn't even be taxed, because it's medicine, like food, medicine, it's not taxed, we shouldn't tax it. Not that part of it, and another thing here, hold on, give me a minute. Okay, as far as, uh, they have closed down over twenty sus- uh, uh, dispensaries here, I've heard. In the last few months or longer than that, they've closed a lot of them down, and I believe they're still doing that. So, uh, I believe the council and the and the staff's doing their job right there, they keep on popping up, but you keep on closing them down and that's a great thing. Because, you know, they gotta pay their fair share, if they're gonna come here and s- uh, set up shop, I think they should. So let them go through the channels and let them do, you know, what they need to do to, if they wanna pursue that business legally. So that's another, um, one of my ideas as far as my concerns, and it's coming, you know. The council's got it going, the staff's got it going, we just, uh, gotta dot our i's and and, um. Cross our t's and go from there, but, hey, I think, uh. It's gonna come out alright in the end and I think you're doing a good job and the staff's doing a good job, as far as the fees, well, I think they're a little obsessive, but I guess you guys can plan that out. Or sort that out, thank you.
Thank you. No, okay, alright, so we'll go ahead and, um, close the public, uh, the hearing. Um, actually, I mean, just the public testimony, sorry, and, um, we'll go ahead and go to deliberation. We will go to, I'll go ahead and, um, start off, um, here. Um, I do believe that we should keep the the recommendation that we have, you know, uh, that staff has already worked on. Um, you know, there are, uh, even though they don't wanna say it, but they're our subject matter experts. And they they learned a lot in this, uh, field and they went to consultants and, you know, they're recommending, uh, making this recommendation. Also our planning commission as well, went through the planning commission and through the process. And I think if there were concerns, you know, um, you know, you could address them, you know, at the planning commission at the time. I also believe in, uh, letting the market dictate. Um, but at the same time, you know, I think that there needs to be some reasonable numbers, you know, in in certain areas. Um, and something that matches, uh, state law, you know, I think that's, that's a good thing there. Um, and that's kinda why, even though my personal thing is, you know, to let the market dictate, um, you know, I do believe in, you know, the staff's recommendation. And also to, um, and this would be kind of a later down the road, um, we could always amend, uh, the ordinance, but to allow it in a, uh, light industrial areas. As well, um, so on the south end of town, and one of the things that I will, uh, be requesting is that. If you notice the micro permits, they're only allowed in business park or business park mixed, so I'll be, uh, requesting that we allow it in commercial. So that way there'd be more opportunity, um, if you look at that current map, um, I looked at it and really there's only one section, it's on the east end. That allows for the business park mix, and I believe that Solaris is already on there and Aldi and Skechers. Are already taking that facility, so if we were to approve the ordinance as is, I don't see how they would be able to do any micro. So I would recommend that we allow it in commercial, and as far as enforcement. You know, I think that's really an important point that one of the speakers brought up, uh, we do have a city attorney here and his office and he's like a pit bull over here. And, uh, you know, he's been closing down, uh, several, uh, and he does have procedures in place, so that way, once this is approved. And and we get, get it going in the application and once the whole thing is approved, uh, that we are gonna be very aggressive about going after, uh, the illegal dispensaries. Because like one speaker said, it's not fair, you know, for one to be paying fees and then the other one, uh, not to be. Um, and also, um, my personal belief is that we want class, you know, we want class, you know, from, uh, this whole. Uh, industry, we want it to look nice, uh, that's why in the application process is very detailed, um, as far as, uh, the fees. Um, you know, it's cost recovery, so, you know, someone mentioned, well, it's taxed, but it's not a tax, it's cost recovery. We're just recuperating the fees from public safety, which is the, the police officer in code. Um, and that's where that number comes in, in place. And I do wanna point out other cities, like the city of Paris, they have a thirteen percent tax, plus, you know, their fees. So here in Moreno Valley, we, we don't have a tax, and so, you know, it's just the fees. So I do wanna keep, uh, I want, uh, the audience to keep that in mind as well. So, um, I support, I support this recommendation, I know, uh, one of my colleagues has, um, uh. Some suggestions and so I'll allow, um, uh, my colleagues, uh, to, to speak as well. Okay, council member Cabrera?
Thank you mayor, so multiple things here, uh, appreciate everyone from the public who came out and shared their opinion and all the different perspectives. This is something new to to everyone, and also thank you to our staff for, you know, months of hard work and. Doing research and meetings and contacting different organizations and companies to get this staff report before us. In a very timely fashion, so thank you for all of that. Um, so multiple things, as far as the illegal dispensaries, um, appreciate the city attorney and. Uh, some members of the public brought those up, uh, for for pursuing those, uh, illegal dispensaries and closing them down. Um, we had, we had a lot more last year and as we move forward, we're getting less and less of them, they do pop back up. But we're on top of that, the city attorney is making sure that he follows up through the court system to close those illegal dispensaries down. Um, I do have a question for probably the city attorney as far as the tax. Um, on medicinal cannabis and recreational cannabis. Um, theoretically, say, the voters did approve a tax on the November ballot. Would medicinal cannabis, uh, be be taxable, could there be a tax on that, yes or no?
I think that, um, certainly recreational, um. Cannabis would be subject to, uh, to a tax and and I believe and I I I would need to research it. And, and I believe, and I, I, I would need to research it in greater depth, that for the purposes of the type of tax that the city would be proposing, which is in the form of an excise tax, medicinal cannabis would also be, uh, subject to that tax. Could be, and that would be the choice as, as far as the ballot language is concerned.
Thank you. And I know we're still looking into that. Marshall Ironman and his team will be continuing that, uh, moving forward. As far as the education, I completely agree. You know, there's, there's different ways of consuming the, the plant. I've done a lot of research into all the different aspects of, of the industry. And definitely, as far as our students and everyone in general, I mentioned the different ways of consuming the product because there are healthier ways of putting it into your body, and there are very unhealthy ways of putting it into your body. For example, the obvious one of smoking. Uh, it's very unhealthy for people in general, and that's something that, uh, potential, uh, businesses that come into the city that receive permits, or anyone else, us as a city and the city council, have to work to educate the, the population on the pros and the cons, the benefits, and all the negative aspects health-wise as well. As far as, uh, well, in the future, as the mayor mentioned, we can always make amendments, and it'll probably have to happen because it's brand new, and we're gonna learn a lot of new things here. One thing that, that, um, I may ask for in the future is the definition of an arcade that's mentioned in our ordinance. So I will, uh, allow staff to go look into that as well, and then, uh, possibly bring that back in the future for an amendment. Also, I, I wanted to ask if, I think Rick Sansomire, maybe if you can give a little bit of background as far as, uh, the signage and graphics that's mentioned in the ordinance? You know, what, uh, what requirements are we putting on the businesses? And also site security? So what kind of requirements will these businesses need as far as signage and graphics and site security?
Okay, so on signage and graphics, the, um, the code is written so that the signage is, is somewhat limited. That is based on the state regulations as well. We believe that these types of activities, and the state believes these types of activities should not be high-profile type jurisdictions, so they should not have any, uh, graphics or, or symbols that are, that are obvious, uh, cannabis leaves and these sorts of things. So it would be limited to the name of the business, one single sign on a, on a wall, uh, probably the business name. The, um, interior of, the interior of the, the building is not gonna have, uh, as much sign regulation as any of this. Not visible from the public, so they'll be able to display their products and their advertising inside, those will not be regulated. The, from a security standpoint, there are requirements in our code for them to identify that the facility is under surveillance, that it's being digitally recorded, so that people know that the facility is basically, your, your presence there and your activity there is being recorded in some fashion. That, that's one of the security measures. Uh, there is a requirement for signage that basically says that consumption on-site is not allowed. So that's one of the other required signs that will be required in each of the businesses. I think that's about all of the signage that is required, uh, of each business. Uh, now, each business will be able to come in and, um, you know, give us some, you know, description. We're not going to be so restrictive that they can't have some sort of identity in their name, but, but it won't be a lot, so.
Thank you. And then as far as the site security, if someone can give me, um, some requirements that we're imposing?
I'd be happy to do that as well. On, on the site security, uh, the, the code is, is asking for a location for, uh, the locating of where distribution-type vehicles, where they, where they're bringing product to or from, the site would be parked, so that there's a, it's in a secure location. Lighting is being addressed. The, uh, one speaker talked about the, uh, consumption of the product, uh, within twenty feet of, of the site. I just wanted to make that clear, that that twenty feet is not from the front door, it's from the actual parcel line. So, uh, you have to get off the parcel, and then you have to go an additional twenty feet before you can consume the product. That's intended to be, um, a, a security, uh, measure. There is, uh, requirements for the lighting on the site. I believe that there's an actual distance that we're, we're trying to promote lighting so that you can see all across the site, both as you get close to the doors, as you're in the parking lot, and then even off-site, uh, the lights are supposed to provide some. And this is one of the unique things about this particular use is, most of the lighting is usually confined to a site. And here, we have a requirement that you should be able to be able to see past the site. So those are some of the security measures.
Thank you, Rick. And my main question, the reason why I ask that is, as far as actual security, you know, personnel, a person on the premises, uh, you know, watching, keeping watch?
And just a friendly reminder to the council, we are in deliberation, so, uh, if you could keep your, your response brief.
If, if I may. If I could ask Mark Gross to possibly come up here and ask the question with regard to the, the onsite security, I think he might have a better handle on the code, I'll have to search through, but we do have some requirements for security guards.
Yeah, because I, I, I read through it, and basically what I just wanna let the public know, educate you guys, is we are gonna require security guards and the kind of certification that they're going to need. So these are not just any people, um, being security guards, they're actually have certificates, and they, they have to be trained.
Mayor and council, while, while, uh, Mark's going through his notes, it's also important to point out that, uh, among the key areas to be evaluated in the process, uh, through which permit applications are being reviewed, is an evaluation of the site security plan. Uh, there are a lot of points, if you will, that are available for that, so that will be a, a very prominent feature.
If I may, Mayor, in, in more deeper response to Councilmember Cabrera's question with regard to taxing, it can be taxed. There is exemption cards that are available to users from the state, very few people have them. And if they have that card, they would be exempt from paying, paying the tax.
Medicinal use, yeah, thank you.
Uh, councilmember, if I could interject here, since everybody else is, I thought I'd get in too. But there's a, there is a provision in the Title IX ordinance before you that talks about site security. It's very specific that a security system should be in place with, uh, video and surveillance. And, uh, there's about three requirements that pertain directly to, uh, those requirements in Title IX. So along with the other, uh, provisions that may be, I think, in Chapter Five with security.
Yeah, that's correct, I mean.
Rather brief, please. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just real quick, uh, I think Alan and Rick mentioned most of the items. The one I wanted to touch upon is, uh, and I'll just read it real quick. Professionally and centrally monitored fire sprinklers, robbery and burglar alarm systems must be installed and maintained in a good working order. Uh, there's gonna be alarm system that must be, uh, must provide a private security company, or include a private security company that is required to respond to every alarm. So that is, uh, some of the provisions in the code.
Thank you, thank you. And so, that's, that's about all that I really, uh, wanted to comment on and, and just get some more insight on. So I, I like the ordinance overall as it is, and, um, I'm fine with, with, uh, changing the, for micro businesses, uh, so that we can allow that in, uh, community commercial, I believe it was. Uh, I also would like to request two things. Um, as far as the number of permits for cultivation, I would like to increase that, uh, by three. So a total of eight permits for cultivation. And as far as dispensaries, I would like to decrease from ten down to eight. The reason why I pick eight is because we still are going to allow two permits for micro businesses, which will potentially, uh, allow for ten dispensaries total here in the city. So increase cultivation permits by three, which equals eight cultivation permits, and decrease dispensary permits from ten down to eight.
All right, and then we'll go to, um, we'll go to, uh, councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, deliberation.
Thank you. You know, when, when this first was, was, um, brought out, I was against it one hundred percent. Wasn't against the medical, but against the recreational marijuana usage. After speaking to, to residents, majority of them says, yeah, we want that for revenue reasons. We need more money in this city, and that's one way we can make it. Some of those residents I've spoke to since, and I would say majority of them says, what the heck are we doing? What did I vote on? My answer to them is, you weren't educated enough when you voted. That is a primary, um, thing when it comes to, to working with something like this. Educate yourself before you vote on something. I've had residents saying, and we don't want this in the city now, this is, this is not right. Well, you voted on it. Education, well, education also comes with distributing, selling, cultivating. You need to educate yourself on the process. A lot of people didn't understand the process about the labs. Well, why do we need labs? Well, you, you need to test your, what they're growing out there. You, you just can't buy something, you don't know what's in there. A lot of these residents don't even know what the lab consists of. Well, why do we have labs there that, you know? Well, it's for that reason, you test the product. You don't know what's in that product when you buy it, the consumer doesn't, and we have to protect the consumer. So yes, we have labs that have to, um, to test this, this, um, and it's gonna cost money. It's gonna cost money. Well, then they ask, well, why, why do we have so many, are you gonna have so many restrictions? Again, you need to educate yourself. Why? Because you just can't put something out there, just like alcohol. You can't put a liquor store at every corner. You gotta stop and realize that selling this product has to be regulated. Gotta be regulated. So my point is here, this, it's coming. There's, there's not much we can do now, other than approve of it. But educate yourself on this product. Educate your children. It's not for your children to have in their possession. That's where the adults come in. Educate yourself, educate your children. Our schools have their own problems, and I, I guarantee you, the schools are gonna, are gonna have more problems now as soon as this is all legalized. But we need to educate our, 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 our kids. One more thing. I'm for this now, uh, because of, of all the regulations, I think this is great. Like one of the speakers had said here that, um, you know, he was more concerned about security. Well, we have security. We're going to have, when they pull an application, there's gonna be a part in there explaining how they're gonna secure their product. There's one thing that I did not see, and maybe I overlooked it. Time of delivery and the days that this can be delivered to the dispensaries. I'll get with staff later on that. I, I, I don't know if I overlooked that. But in alcohol, they can only deliver it certain time of the day and certain time of the week, alcohol. I hope the, the, the cannabis, um, regulations also go on those guidelines too. We don't want them delivering them at twelve midnight, 'cause then crime's gonna go up. Uh, we don't want them delivering them on, on a Sunday morning, where, where there's church going on, and down the street here, they're delivering, and, and, and it's not gonna look good. So I, I overlooked that, I, I guess. Uh, and we'll have staff recheck it and, and advise me on that, but the money ain't gonna be there, revenue ain't gonna be there the first year, we all know that. People ask me, well, why aren't we gonna have money? They're selling it. Well, with the permits, the cost of the permits and everything else, we are going to accept that as, uh, like a tax. But the second year, we're gonna tax them. We're gonna start taxing it, and hopefully it brings in some revenue. So with all that being said, I, I'm for this. The staff has done a heck of a job, I applaud them for it. And let's just go forward with this, and, uh, let's get this, um, illegal sales off our streets, and let's make it legal now. Thank you.
Mayor Protembaka?
Um, I had a question, are we having any, um, outdoor grow, outdoor cultivation? And this is a, a question that has come up from, um, some of my constituents. And, um, the other question is on the, um, on the micro business, I also agree that, um, with the mayor, that it should be allowed in the, uh, community commercial as well. And, um, I heard one of the, um, speakers mention that, um, about thirteen dispensaries would be appropriate because of the size of the city. And I also wanna mention that, uh, it's my understanding that the city of Paris allows only medical marijuana to be, um, sold, and it is taxed in, in the city of Paris. I know they don't allow the recreational, and we're doing both, correct? Yes, okay. So I would, um, agree with, um, with, with staff on the recommendations, with the exception of adding the, um, micro business to the community commercial. And we need to do a lot of education with the community, and they have to understand that currently, every single dispensary that's opened in the city of Marina Valley is operating without a license. It's my understanding that our city attorney's office sent a letter to every property owner, informing them, educating them, that there are no licenses currently in the city of Marina Valley, but there will be pretty soon. And I know that a lot of that revenue is going to be used for enforcement, and we are gonna have, um, a good business in our city. It's my understanding that some of these, uh, micro businesses are gonna be like an Apple store. That's how, how classy they're gonna be, and we're gonna have, uh, um, revenue streaming in from those businesses. And, um, I would like to keep the buffers consistent with state law, so, thank you.
You want me to answer the question, which was, is outdoor cultivation allowed? The answer is no.
Okay. Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. This is, uh, very comprehensive and very well put together, as I expected it would be, because I, I know who is working on it. So, um, Ricky and I go back quite a few years of working together. So, um, and he's very detailed when he goes through these things. I also appreciated, um, the visits and stuff that I had with the staff on this, and their openness to the input from all of the council members, including myself. So I just want my hats off to you. And Alan, your, uh, your constant, uh, updates were very helpful, uh, for our evaluation while we're waiting to take on this meeting. So I just, that's my compliments to my staff out there. And you guys did a very, very comprehensive job on this, uh, this whole issue. I represent a lot of residents, and they have their feelings as well, whether you regulate it or you don't regulate it, uh, on what they would want in our city and what they wouldn't want in our city. But you guys did the best, you, I think you probably did one of the best pro, plans I've seen, heard of, or spoken about. And I wanna thank you.
Mr. Mayor? May I address the, the one councilmember Marquez question about the hours of delivery? The only thing we have in the, in the ordinance is on page one seventy-eight, which indicates that the hours of operation for the cannabis dispensary shall be established on a case-by-case basis with the CUP. So we'd have to get into more detail, we did not specify the hours for the deliveries of, of the product. So that's something we can consider during the con, the condition use permit process.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, close the council deliberation.
Mayor, could, could you, uh, just one question for clarification? I wanna make sure that we are correctly interpreting what, what you're saying. Uh, when you were talking about allowing micro businesses in commercial areas, you used commercial in a more generic sense. A couple of the other council members mentioned community commercial. I wanna make sure that we are correctly understanding.
Community commercial.
Community commercial, okay.
Community commercial.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm gonna close the deliberation. And I'm gonna go ahead and entertain a motion, we're gonna take, it's gonna be two separate motions on this one. One is for the land use, and then one is for the regulations as far as, you know, the fees and the application process and all that, which would be, which will, if approved, will be available, uh, April, uh, second, uh, to submit. You know, you can submit until May eleventh, like Marshall mentioned. So I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number one, which is Title IX land use ordinance with amendments to include allowing micro in community commercial, and changes to include a cultivation and a dispens- and changes to include eight cultivation and eight dispensaries. So, those were the only changes in those, and all the other ones are okay. Okay? Okay. Motion by Councilmember Marquez, second by Cabrera. Please vote. So, cultivation will be eight, and it's approved. Four yeses and then one no. So, again, it will include eight cultivation and eight dispensaries. Okay? And then everything else that we had in there. The manufacturing stays the same, micro stays the same, except micro, it's going to be a community commercial.
Yes, and that would be a total of 27 permits.
Got it? All right. The next motion, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation fee and application process resolutions.
So, moved?
Okay, moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Okay? And it's approved. Four to one no. All right?
Good.
Okay. Let's give a round of applause. Let's take a break. 10-minute break. Welcome back to the Moreno Valley City Council on March 20th. So, we just finished item E1, the public hearing. We're going to move on to now non-agenda items. So, this is like if you want to speak about anything in general in regards to the city or anything that's going on. This is where you would fill out your blue speaker slip and then turn it into the bailiff. And then we'll go ahead and call three speakers at a time. Okay? Madam Clerk, how many speakers for non-agenda items?
We have 10 so far. Brandon Karn, Radiance Jackson, Kendrick Iglesias.
And these are on not the cannabis?
Not the cannabis.
Because the cannabis was already voted on. Okay? Brandon?
Hi. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and staff. I come to you not to address a much broader issue. I think all of us have noticed, no matter where you are in Moreno Valley, that there has been a significant increase over the last several months or even the last year of either homeless activity or homeless encampments, no matter where you are, from Sunnymead Boulevard to the Western End. I'm coming particularly over concern of residents that live in the northeastern end who have had a significant concern over an encampment that is on county land, but it borders the city limits. If you go along one of the city trails that crosses Redlands Boulevard from the Equestrian Center down up to the Badlands, there has been a homeless encampment that began in about December of last year from one tent and a dog that was not leashed to one that has now expanded to at least 10 people, several different vehicles, and possibly a mobile home, and many different people and activities that have been very suspicious. Many of the residents there are believing that some of the individuals have maybe been trespassing on their property or breaking into their home. They're attributing some of the vehicles there to being part of it. And they have contacted the police. The police have been out there because even though it's not in the city limits, it's still in the sphere of influence for the city of Moreno Valley, and it is in the jurisdiction of the Moreno Valley Police. And they have gone out several times today, as well as the last few weeks, for what I've been informed of. But the issue keeps continuing. The homeless individuals will go into the crevices of the hills. They'll go underneath the foliage. They'll just disappear long enough for the police to leave or for no one to be looking for them to go back, and they will fill the same spot again overnight, even start campfires in the process, which is illegal because you're not allowed to be camping on county land. That's one of the ordinances that's been passed by the county supervisors. This has become a tremendous safety issue, even for myself, because individuals are using these city trails, going across the street from the Equestrian Center and other locations. Many people are not aware of it because this is inside of a reservoir that was built actually in the 1920s. So, it's been there for some time, and it's buried beneath a large embankment that was part of it. It's part of the land. And they're very surprised to see, oh, there's someone homeless here, someone who has a dog, someone who could be engaged in criminal activity that they're not aware of, could be in illegal drugs or mentally ill. So, it's becoming a safety issue for people who are riding horses through there, have taken children through there, their animals. And it's something they're becoming very concerned about, and they're feeling that the police are not doing enough, or the city. I know the city does enough outreach, and they have increasingly so. But they're very concerned about it, and I've come here to just make it a public fact for people using that trail to be concerned over the issue, to be vigilant that they still continue to contact the police and be more vocal about it, and as well as yourselves to be more aware of this issue as well because it's becoming potentially a security risk. It's also a historic site, that is where the Moreno Tunnel is, and a fire or any sort of damage caused there by vandalism or some damage sites that are well over 100 years old.
Thank you, Brandon.
So, I am concerned of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the
Radiance Jackson, Kendrick Iglesias, and Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening. I'm Radiance Jackson, a resident of Moreno Valley. And this spring, I'll be graduating with my master's in athletic training from California Baptist University. I'm here today to advocate for the profession of athletic training. March is National Athletic Training Month. If you are unfamiliar with what athletic training is, we are healthcare professionals that provide services, including injury and illness prevention, wellness promotion, and education, emergency care, examination and a clinical diagnosis, therapeutic intervention, and rehabilitation. So, you'll see athletic trainers in multiple settings, including college, professional, sports. But I want to focus on the high school level. So, currently in California, there's approximately 800,000 high school athletes participating in sports. But in California, the law doesn't require that all high schools have an athletic trainer working there. And about 50% of high schools in the state do not have an athletic trainer. So, therefore, that leaves coaches and volunteers, parents, to care for kids if they get hurt, to be the first responders, evaluate for concussions and traumatic injuries and things like that. So, not only are there a lack of athletic trainers, but there are athletic trainers now that are practicing uncertified. So, they don't have to sit for the board exam, and they're still able to get jobs in California and care for the kids. And there are athletic trainers practicing now in the city of Moreno Valley that are not certified. And there are some high schools in the city of Moreno Valley that don't have an athletic trainer at all. So, today, I'm asking for your help to advocate for the profession, to get athletic trainers, certified athletic trainers, in our high schools to take care of our kids and make sure that the person that's going out there treating them and helping them is certified and has the education that I'm receiving now, that I've received for the past two years, to help our kids in our high schools and make sure that they're safe while they're playing in contact sports. And I also wanted to let you know that we, there is a bill right now, currently, AB 3110, that is for the regulation of athletic trainers. Therefore, if California, the last state in the United States, does get regulation for athletic training, they don't require that all schools with athletic trainers, that they are certified. Thank you.
Thank you, Radiance.
Kendrick Iglesias, Rafael Burguerras, and Martín Cabrera Sr.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, staff. Good evening, residents. Good evening, citizens. I would first like to talk about generations. Recently, a week or two ago, the Pew Research Center has actually officially defined who is a millennial and who is not a millennial. A millennial is anyone who was born within the years 1981 and 1996. And everyone who was born between the year 1997 to maybe, if you like, they're trying to figure out which is the color state for the, and if the year for the generation that was born after the millennials and which I prefer as one of them, a digital native. I'm actually classified as the oldest one in that generation after the millennials. And as someone who actually is the oldest after the millennials, I prefer to be called digital native. And maybe we can call the next generation, the touch generation. Because mostly, when they grew up, when they were like baby, they would have actually touch technology, not digital technology. And secondly, I would like to ask the council, how much does a stop sign cost? I really am interested in how much does a stop sign cost? Thirdly, I would actually, I would like to ask the council to consider within the next four years maybe upgrading the cameras in this chamber. So, that could be like maybe 8K or 32K cameras with HDR and Dolby Vision and Dolby Atmos. So, people in the, so the chambers could be properly prepared for the future of television. So, that could have, so when people are watching at the home, they could have like almost a real vision of them actually sitting in the chamber. As I heard, that 32K actually looks like if you're actually looking through a window. And 8K is almost like you almost are looking in a window. Second, fourthly, I would actually ask the council to please consider putting the agenda back 12 days as normal. And fifthly, I would like to ask the council to please add more council members or the untabled decision to add more council members. And lastly, I would actually ask the council to please consider exempting the city of Moreno Valley itself from the California Value Act, like Los Alamos did recently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rafael Burguerras, Martín Cabrera Sr., Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents and guests. I agree with Brandon. There is a concern in the city of Moreno Valley. There are a lot of homeless people. But I've learned from the last chief, they have the right to be out there and live in the street. But the good thing about Moreno Valley, we have a program to help them. We have a program that we can send them to get cleaned up, to get listened to, and find some kind of employment. Because I believe that all of us, inside of our hearts, we deserve integrity. There's something in all of us. I don't care how bad the person looks in the street. That person deserves the right to live and find a place where they can take a shower, clean all their private parts. They have that right. And I thank God for Moreno Valley because we have that program here through the leadership that the mayor gives us. We have that program. And for the council members that approve that, we have that program here. What we are guilty of, residents of Moreno Valley, is when we give them a dollar at the corner. When we give them money, we keep them there. As much as we love, because we are a great city, a great nation of love and compassion and giving, but we also are a cause of a big problem when we give them money on the corner and they stay there. We need to change that. Also, Moreno Valley, when I drive around, we are not growing. We have a lot of brand-new buildings, hotels, gas stations, especially on Day Street, and all these areas. We are growing. We are finally, 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 finally on the track that we should have been many, many years ago. With strong leadership and residents that vote for the right candidate to push us forward, we'll make this city great, not only to help ourselves to live a better life, but to help those that need our help. Because we are those type of people that live in Moreno Valley. We want to help others. But we also have to learn how to help ourselves. So, we have a lot of brand-new growth, a lot of brand-new things that are coming. So, when people tell you that Moreno Valley's not growing, I'm telling you, it's growing. And it's growing big, and it will get real nice for all of us and those that need our help.
Thank you, Rafael. And thank you for bringing up the Homeless to Work Program. That's a program that I started that came from the city of Albuquerque. And it's been really a win-win for the homeless and also for our community. Thank you.
Martín Cabrera Sr., Roy Blackard, and Lucha Oden.
Hey, good evening again. This call is more like for the community, about cleaning, about keeping the city clean. Council Cabrera have encouraged for a few, with a few events in his district. And he's doing great. I'm so proud of him. I'm so proud of you guys as well, Marquez, Christian, Baca, Gaiba. Thank you for your hard work. But, community, please, keep the city clean. We performed our last cleaning, and there's a lot of pollution all over the sidewalks. Please, keep it clean. Remember, if you're paying taxes, doesn't mean the city has to spend that money toward a specific debt. But it's up to you, community, if you want to keep it clean and safe. And we always complain about taxes, but those taxes could go down if we keep it clean and at higher rating level. The city could be much better as it is, as better as today's. Thank you, community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrera.
Roy Blackard, Lucha Oden, Charlotte Drake.
Yes, we do have a program to help the homeless. The mayor brought it to the city. It's working. It's a catch of the things that we should be doing. And I would encourage more community members to get involved in the process instead of trying to cut everybody down at every opportunity. You might find, things might work out a little better. I agree with Mr. Cabrera. Yes, we should take care of our own backyard. It will help our community and maybe save us some tax dollars, which I'm going to segue into. The, I saw in the press enterprise, a opinion piece by Mayor Will O'Neill, the Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem of Newport Beach. Title of it is, "When California Cities Blur the Line Between Tax Education and Tax Advocacy." He writes, "Cities throughout our state have been using Orwellian tactics to suppress opposition to tax increases through coordinated and premeditated education campaigns. These campaigns operate in a gray legal area because each campaign uses public resources to accomplish its goals." Measure M 2014. Did Moreno Valley Unified School District do this? 2016, did the city of Moreno Valley do this for the hotel tax? You're putting on the citizens? You said it was for public safety, you said it was going to fix our schools. So far, they've only used $20 or $30 million of that bond money. They are not putting the schools, they did not have shovel-ready projects, and it's hurting our kids. Same thing with the public safety. I saw the brochures that you sent out with all the nice public safety, but as I would like to, I would like to hear, you cut public safety hours, boots on the ground with what you're doing, and now we're faced with a county, we're looking at $10 million increase to keep it the same or 26 officers cut. Tax increases are not the way to go, and not taking our tax dollars to, if not advocate, push that gray area as far as you can. Because the free market will work, if only if you let it. That's the bottom line. If you try to increase taxes, again, you're going to spiral downhill, and you will not make it. The way to prosperity and opportunity is to let the free market work, uncut the creativity of all the people here, and let them figure it out. Because they will, and they have far better solutions than you all ever will. Just like the last issue we had, you let the free market work, you give them the opportunity, and we will come out the better for it. I will hope in the future, we're going to make a few adjustments in that, and I hope we do it quickly because how it starts may determine how it finishes. So, get it right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. You, we have Lucha.
Oden, Charlotte Drake, and Karen Johnson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember staff. My name is Lucha, and I am a financial advocate and educator here locally in Moreno Valley. I'm a resident and have been so for the last 20 years. As many of you may know, next month is Financial Literacy Month, which was recognized in 2004 by the Senate Resolution 316 to raise public awareness and the serious consequences about the lack of understanding about personal finances. I'm currently sharing a book by the name of Saving Your Future. And this book is And um, this book is in many different languages, and it's been in print over a million copies. Um, and so I'll just share a couple of bullet points from the book. Um, according to recent surveys, North Americans are facing serious financial challenges. Um, thirty-three percent or more than seventy-seven million of Americans don't pay their bills on time. Thirty-nine percent carry credit card debt from month to month. Only fifty-nine percent of adults say they have savings. We don't have much and we don't know much. Nobody teaches us how to manage our money in school. Financial issues are not often discussed and financial products not always explained. Most people have trouble balancing their own checkbook and reading a financial statement. We use credit cards every day and don't always understand all the hidden charges. We buy insurance policies and stick them in the cap in the file cabinet. We contribute to our retirement accounts and hope someone will take care of it. We all want to have a comfortable retirement, but few have a plan. We may be active spenders, but passive savers. And so the reason I'm here today is to share about a national financial literacy campaign that I'm currently a part of to educate a million families by the year twenty twenty. Um, our organization is offering free financial workshops. I'm currently offering those workshops in the city of Blythe, and I'm happy to reach out to that community. But this is my community, and so I'd like to start here. Um, I'm looking for the city to help me, just to partner with me in helping to educate the citizens of Moreno Valley as well as the employees. Um, I'm passionate about what I do and in financial literacy because that wasn't provided to me. I didn't have that education growing up. And I know there's many citizens, many families that live paycheck to paycheck and are really, um, you know, living the um, quiet life of desperation on, you know, what they're going to do for tomorrow. And so um, I appreciate you letting me share and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucha, and thank you for coming to the council meeting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Charlotte Drake, Karen Johnson, Ashen Stanford.
Hi, uh, good evening, Charlotte.
I come here tonight because um, I'm one of those people that that stands on the corner with my walker and my clothes. Now.
If you could speak into the microphone.
If it it has been to where it's it's a lot of homeless people here. I get SSI, but it's just not enough for me to even have a studio. You understand what I'm saying? So what I'm coming here for is why can't we have a budget to where it's only two things? It's for families and mothers. Okay, they had the mothers on the base. They took them away. Okay, now where where else are they going to go? Because no one, no one is equipped to raise one kid. I raise a whole neighborhood, Neshra neighborhood, Moreno Valley. They call me Mama Cece. And I've been standing out there looking at these kids. You guys can put these cameras and on the streets. But what about the the schools for the young? What about our babies? What about my grandbabies? I'm here for a reason. It's not because I don't want to be here, because I don't. But I have to face my face, my fears. And these young adults, when you put these weed stores in your city, you know what that does to us? It's just not me. It's everyone. Everyone that's homeless out there, they're good people out there. I'm one of them. I haven't found an apartment yet. There's nothing wrong with my credit. I don't make enough. You understand what I'm saying? I can't work anymore. So where did that leaves me? Standing right on Sunny Me Boulevard because I can't pay my rent for a motel. Because it's eighty-five dollars a night. Somewhere in the budget here in Moreno Valley, California, I'm not from here, but I raised my kids here, me and my mother. I was the one that went out in the streets. My nickname is Tar Baby. I'm gonna be in the streets for the rest of my life. That's why I'm gonna die in the streets because there's so much in the streets that I look at. When I say it takes a village to raise a child, it does. It really does. They need help out there. We need help. Rent control. That's all I'm saying. It's hard. But I made it through two strokes and a heart attack. I can never work again, but God is still good. When I see it's raining, they should have school buses. I'm from originally from Los Angeles. Our apartment units in Los Angeles have nurseries. When the mothers are at work, they can go in the nursery, check in. Like you can't put that in the apartments here in Moreno Valley. You make enough money. And before I leave, I would like to have the district attorney's number. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Karen Johnson, Ashen Stanford, Luis Palomares.
Oh, okay, you walk. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Ashen Stanford.
Hello, Mayor. Um, this is my first time even coming to the city council or city hall for the first time. I'm a Moreno Valley resident. I've been here all my life. I grew up out here. I feel like I'm trapped in a city somehow, some way, I don't know, but I'm gonna soon close the curtain on the city. Um, I just want to speak about what I've been experiencing out here and seeing myself. Um, I wasn't told this for some reason. I just had to go out and find my myself. And I don't like what I'm seeing. Like, I never, like, the city's not, it's turning out to be something it's not. Like, with the homeless issue, with the activity that's on here in the streets, the killing, like, there's everything that's happening out here that, like, some of the, like, people that are, like, the residents that they don't know. Or that some, like, I don't understand why the activity that's happening out here that we have so many cops and like all these people in jail, but there's still activity out here. And I just don't understand that. And I see it, and the cops see it, and it's still happening. And I just don't understand why why it's still happening. Um, as for the homeless being out there and on drugs or and doing what they're doing, like, us giving them handouts is not doing anything. It's just, it's like keeping them on the corner, like that guy said. And I feel like there's not enough resources in Moreno Valley for that. Like this, like Riverside County, yes, like it's in Riverside and like places, but there's not, it's not around where they need it or where they can trans, like, have transportation towards or whatnot. I'm just saying that there's a lot going on. It's not safe. Like, our generation is learning things that is not influential on the younger generation coming up. And something needs to be done about it. So if me speaking here, me being here, me speaking on that does something, then it's my duty.
Thank you, Ashan. And if you, Ashan, if you could leave your your phone number uh, with our city clerk, and then uh, we can set up a meeting. That way we can meet with you. Okay, great. Get get your ideas. All right, uh, next speaker?
Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. You know, um, the homeless program is working, but I only think, well, I think that there needs to be somebody to go out there monitored monitored and go out there and bring some of these people in and educate them what's going on because a lot of them don't know yet. You know, the resources are there now, but a lot of people don't know about it. So I think they've got to put somebody out there to do that, let them know what's going on. And I've handed out quite a few of those homeless uh, little cards you have, but there's some places I can't even get into. So only when I can, I do. But uh, that'd be great. And as far as um, you know, I I believe Marcus last time said in the paper that about the recall that's going on and all this, that he has nothing to do with it, but you know, he does, he does. And um, I wish, I wish none of this was going on because we don't like this. It just sets our city back so far back, so far back. You know, along with Denise Fleming and the ringleader, um, Ladonna Jensen, and also the other one, the Price, the puppet master over there, they're all involved in this. You know, we would have been so far ahead if it wasn't for all these bogus lying recalls. And it just set the city back so far, cost the city so, the taxpayers so much money. And now we're trying to go forward, and it's going on again. It needs to really stop. You know, for the sake of our city, and it's not about the council as a whole, it's about our community. It's about our community. The staff works hard to make things happen for our city. It sets them back. It sets them back also. I mean, they give all their, you know, time, energy, and all their um, smarts and everything into this, and this has to be going on again? When is it going to end, Marcus? Can you call off your dogs? I mean, come on. I mean, you can say say no, I don't have nothing to do with it, but we see all meeting here, meeting there, Cocos when it was open still, this started way, this plan started in your mind. The conspiracy sound uh, started a long time ago. So you could say, no, I don't, I don't have nothing to do with it, but we know. It's it's sad. It's a new day in Moreno Valley. Let's just keep on going forward and forget about all this. And and Price, I hear he was gonna move to Arizona. What the hell is he still doing here? Causing problems in our community. He's got a fat retirement. You know, a give to the community, give back to the community, you know, take from it and and um, destruction, you you know, break down what we're trying to do with the staff, what this council is trying to do. And like I said, Marcus is a part of all this. Hey, I got I got handed to you today, Marcus, you did something right. You voted for this. Cannabis. Uh, thank you for that.
Thank you, Luis. Okay. We're going to go to um, reports. We have Mayor Pro Tem Baca for Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. At the RCTC meeting, we um, approved the expansion of the Freeway Service Patrol, also known as FSP, to include weekends. The FSP is a roving team of tow trucks traveling selected Riverside County freeways to assist motorists with car trouble. The operators can assist with flat tires, dead batteries, and vehicles that run out of fuel. As part of an overall plan to improve transportation throughout Riverside County, the FSP operates as a joint venture between Caltrans, CHP, and the RTCT, RCTC. Please visit the RCTC website for additional information on the FSP's services, operating locations, and hours. Thank you.
And the next one is Riverside Transit Agency, Councilman Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Riverside County Transit Agency is having another youth summer fair promotion from June, excuse me, from June first through September thirteenth. The twenty-five cents students in grades one through twelve can ride any fixed route bus, including commuter link express buses. Students must show a school-issued ID or a most recent ID from any school as long as they are within the age limit, which is eighteen years old. RTA also have the youth youth ID card that they can, they can acquire or um, I should say, they can get issued from RTA. All you do is do it, fill out the application online, and um, they'll take care of you with their ID. The um, addition, addition, members of the public are invited to join the Transportation Now, which is referred to as T Now organization. This organization promotes public transportation. T Now includes elected officials, which I'm on, community activists, which we have several. We have more activists from the city of Paris than we do Moreno Valley. So the residents of Moreno Valley need to come out and support this this agency. And also transit riders. We have a lot of riders that that have made a big difference on on changing routes. The directors want to hear that. You come out with your input, and they do consider that. The monthly Moreno Valley Paris chapter meets monthly. Please visit the RTA website for any further information. That concludes my report. Thank you.
And Councilmember Gaiba for SCAG.
Thank you. It's hot up here, but it wasn't hot in Yosemite. Sorry. I was at Yosemite Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and returned home on Sunday after the rest of the conference with SCAG. Uh, it's called Building Livable Communities. I was there on behalf of SCAG as a as as one of the members there, so um, it was a pretty packed conference, Thursday, March fifteenth. When I got there, we started right in at seven thirty in the evening. Um, Friday was all day, Saturday was all day. I'll just give you a couple of the topics just so that she understands what we're going through and working. Uh, the the Building Livable Communities is is a California Communities United for Recovery and Resilience uh, conference that we had here. So we had um, people from all over California, all different representatives from all over and different speakers. So on Thursday, uh, we basically had climate change discussions. And I'll try to do is put together a kind of a report for everybody so that they'll be able to see it. But I got back at eleven o'clock Sunday night, kind of rested up yesterday, and I'm back here all day. So um, then then on Thursday, on Friday, Social Equity Era of Sustainable Smart Growth, which went right along with a lot of discussions on the Big Data Open Data Program that I worked on. And we now have a new guidance document on on smart cities because of that. Um, uh, that evening, then we came back for, it's California Communities United um, a discussion and transportation revolutions going on, and a lot of discussion on autonomous vehicles and what's going on in the future of that. Uh, we didn't leave until nine o'clock that night. And then Saturday was our all-day affair. Uh, and leveraging energy industry disruptions, discussions on methane gas and 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 information like that. I'm trying not to belabor this because there's a lot of stuff that we did, but hopefully I'll get a report out for you guys. And again, transportation innovation and disruption, free charging programs. Um, Rick, there's some some information here that I'll probably be getting to you guys, um, especially on density bonus laws. Good discussions on those topics. A new group called Yimby's, Yes in My Backyard, and then AB seventy-two and SB thirty-five. So I'll get those notes to you as soon as I can. Then we also had discussions on communication and change management. Um, and then post-disaster recovery. Actually, it was right up my alley because we were talking about earthquakes and firestorms and all of those things that took place. Uh, big disasters on a large scale, so. And then on Sunday before I left, uh, was accessible housing for all, and those are some of the issues there. And I'll try to dig up some of the information on the laws, on the density bonus laws. And I don't know whether we, how what we have in our general plan update that we're doing with that. So you might want to look into that and those AB uh, assembly bills. So that was four days in Yosemite. It did snow for two of those. And I did have to thaw my car out to get out and take one forty down through the Merced River Pass. Um, today was very busy. First thing in the morning, we had our led uh, SCAG Legislative Communications and Membership Committee. That's the agenda for that one. So that one was from eight thirty this morning until ten. Um, the agenda covered several items on there. I, you know, again, I could probably take all night going on with some of this stuff, so I won't belabor it. But we did discuss Prop sixty-eight, Prop sixty-nine, uh, AB twenty-four seventeen, um, SB one-one-one-nine, a Newman Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, uh, emergency and disaster relief legislation, and a variety of other informational arenas as well. Then I had to go back this afternoon for the audit committee as well. So I'm on all these subcommittees, which is kind of good because I can help speak out for the region very well that way. And the audit committee, we, it was fairly short. Um, we had our own internal audit, um, a fiscal year, uh, external auditor update, and uh, internal audit status report, and a hotline update. Uh, they actually have a hot hotline with SCAG um, so that people can call in and report issues that they're concerned about, and then they can do their internals. At the end of the, at the end of the day, I was so proud of the work that Marshall and I and the rest of the team did the past couple of years on the PAFR. They don't have a PAFR, so I suggested they look. They don't have a PAFR, so I suggested they look into that and they thought that might be, this is a good timely opportunity to do that for them as well. So um, you know, if you want to give me one of your PAFRs and I'll send it up to them or we can get the electronic copy. And I can send them a cap, copy of ours as, as a way to go, but they, they thought it was a timely request since they're going into that, so. And then by the end of this week, I'll, I've gone to the bylaw, up, bylaws update. So we have our General Assembly, all of these items will be the things that the, the other council members will be voting on because all one hundred ninety-one cities have a say-so. And all this information, but we get to it first to help clean, clean out and glean out things, so. That's it on the SCAG report, a lot of work to do.
Thank you, uh, we have. City manager. Let me see here, yes, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Uh, I want to start by addressing one of the, the comments tonight, a gentleman spoke very passionately about his concerns about a homeless. Homeless encampment outside the city. Uh, our follow-up will be through two-pronged. Uh, first, our code staff, our managers will reach out to their counterparts at the county. And make sure that they have the same information that we were given tonight. And secondly, our police chief has kindly offered to make his peers at the Hemet and Cabazon stations aware. Uh, of what, what we heard here tonight, so hopefully we can, we can enlist the county's help in this. Uh, I'd like to, to share some good news to the residents of Movout with the residents of Moreno Valley. Our fourth quarter sales tax report came in and again is very, very strong. Um, our point of sales tax revenue for the final quarter of last year. Uh, increased by more than six percent, matter of fact, six point two seven percent over the same quarter in the previous year. Uh, just for context, our, our increase surpassed the county average, which was only four point six seven. So I, I don't want to dwell on numbers, but, but the importance of these figures is that. They are another strong indicator of how our city council's commitment to economic development continues to benefit residents throughout our community. Uh, we have a, a neat opportunity to engage with city government on the twenty-ninth. Uh, Mayor Gutierrez will host the Telephone Town Hall, this is our third such event. Um, and he'll be listening to concerns and, and answering questions directly from residents. Participation is really, really easy. Uh, residents can register for the call by visiting our city website. And look for the Telephone Town Hall Registration page or just email us at telephontownhall@movout.org. Give us your name and phone number and we'll call you when the call starts, it's really an innovative way to engage residents. And what's going on in their community. The rain's coming and the city is ready to help. Uh, empty sandbags and loose sand are, are available. We will have those at. The empty sandbags and loose sand will be at the City Yard Main Office on Paris Boulevard as well as at Fire Station Two. Fire Station Forty-eight and Fire Station Fifty-eight. Uh, we ask that elderly and disabled residents call ahead, let us know they're coming and our staff will help them. Uh, get the, get the supplies they need. For information, residents, please call area code nine five one, four one three, three one six zero. Uh, so the rain's on the way and your city is here to help residents remain safe. Also want to talk, Raphael Brugeras mentioned about how our community is growing and he is dead on. Uh, as the mayor and several council members and I have discussed over recent months, this is our time. Uh, we've got thirty years behind us, uh, we, the, the table's been set. And, and we, as a community, we finally hit our stride. Uh, our city is now the economic engine of inland Southern California. And I just want to assure the council and the community that this staff. Uh, these executive leaders here and, and all the staff we work with every day. Uh, we are energized as we carry out this council's very exciting vision. Uh, and we're out there building this community each and every day. And Mr. Brugeras couldn't have been more correct when, when he talked about that. Uh, and I would like to, if I might just add to my report by asking Chief David, David Kurlewicz. Uh, to provide a special and very timely update to the council and members of the community.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Um, I wanted to bring up and address the issue of active shooters and training that your police department is doing. First off, I wanted to update you on the training that we're giving all city staff and city council members. It's the Run Hide Fight Project of Training that is proceeding and. Through the City Manager's Office, we should be scheduling a class for you and the council members and the rest of the city staff here shortly. Second thing, I've received a lot of requests from, inquiries I should say, from the city council, from concerned citizens. And from students around, around the city about having the schools being trained in the Run Hide Fight drills. Uh, I want to do assure the city council that that is taking place, it, it has been taking place through our, our school resource officers. Informal training has been occurring at each and every high school and that is proceeding as we speak. We don't have a completion date at this point in time, I think ongoing training is more important than getting through the training. And we want to make it updated and timely as possible. As I said, the, the school resource officers are, are each keeping up their, their sights. We do have Train the Trainer in our presence, I want to uh. Thank Officer Brooks, he will be conducting the trainer, or the training sessions with you. And we'll be bringing um current training to the table. One of the last things is I've developed a comprehensive plan and I've reached out to my counterpart at the Training Center. Uh, to increase the number of trainers that we have. And the reason I'm, I'm doing this is to meet the demand for requests to, to have the training go out as, as widespread as possible. Unfortunately, this is the, it's not the norm, but it's becoming more and more prevalent in our society. And having the ability to give people options on how to respond is extremely important and I want to meet that need. And with the council's help and the city manager's help here, I, I believe we can do that and we can make Moreno Valley a much, much. Trained and safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, very briefly related to. The action the council took today on the land use ordinance as well as some of the. Comments that were made by the public speaking on the item. Uh, since the summer, we've, we've identified twenty illegal dispensaries. Uh, we have shut down fifteen of them, of the remaining five, four are in an active. Court case, one is being resolved through a settlement. So we have in the past and will continue in the future to. Uh, take a very strong position against any illegal activity, be it cannabis or other code violations. But our focus will be, as expressed, making sure that. Those who legally enter the business have a fair playing field and competition and eliminate the, the unlawful. Business concerns. Secondly, just another point of clarification. Uh, there've been some speakers that kept referring to revenue from the fees that were adopted. I just want to make sure that the public is clear, I know you are. Uh, the fees that were proposed that you adopted for the resolution simply reimburse the city for the costs and expense of. Administering the program, accepting applications, auditing the locations, having the police department patrol and secure. Uh, all twenty-seven permits if they are issued. Uh, so none of that is revenue. All those fees that the businesses will be paying to exist in the city. Simply reimburse the city for the cost that they impose on the city in the way that they conduct their business. So I just want to make sure that it, everybody's clear that that's not revenue.
Thank you, City Attorney. We have. Councilmember, that brings us to our closing reports. We have Councilmember Gaiba.
I'll keep him brief because my report was long before. Got several things going on for the rest of this week, I pretty much filled you in the last two weeks and I think at the last meeting, the legislative. Meetings that we had up in Sacramento for entire full day with SCAG. Tomorrow is going to be the Riverside University Health System. Groundbreaking ribbon-cutting, what, however you want to say it, for their new education building. So I'd encourage people to come out to that and give them a big round of. Support for what they're doing there because it's really helping our city with our. Me- uh, medical corridor issues and stuff and to have that. And the county's putting a lot of, eh, eh, work into it. Also, there'll be a BIA Coachella Valley Luncheon for the mayor's. AMOC ribbon-cutting coming up, Director Crowder's retirement. Uh, from the AMOC. My SCAG Bylaws Committee, Hundred and Eighteenth Greater Riverside Chamber is having a special dinner. Um, I also have a meeting set up with Senator Roth to discuss the sixty freeway issue. And some nonprofits as well. And then the following before Easter, there's some things going on. Only two other major things, I just want, we got this and ours and invitation. So if you guys want to have a little fun, Rainbow Ridge Elementary School is having a talent show, six to eight PM in the NPR. The doors open at five thirty PM at the Rainbow Ridge Elementary School. Refer for, bring your money. Because refreshments will be sold before the show, it's fundraisers for them. I belong to Rotary, so does. My compadre over there, Marshall. Uh, I believe you mentioned that you had some stuff up on the city's site or whatever, but. Uh, we're having, the Rotary is holding its first annual Hero Run on Saturday, April twenty-eighth. From, what, what time is that, Marshall, it's from nine AM to whenever they get done, I guess. Because it's a five K run, one K, ten fifteen for the fun run. Um, I have a card here, I'll, I'll give that to Angel or something and have them put that up if they can, if that's permitted, not a problem, but. Uh, eh, there are some prizes and, and stuff to read about, I won't belabor them on this one, we'll have that hopefully put up on. I think you had it put, put it up on the website or something, maybe, okay, good, so. I'll just give that one to, to Sean or Angel and take it. And I want to thank you guys for a nice evening, God bless and take care.
Thank you, we have Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, my colleague said he had a nice time at Yosemite with the weather. Well, I spent five days in Washington DC. Thirty-two at night and forty-five during the day, so. Terrible weather, terrible weather. Anyways, cold and windy, but I was able to make it to um. To my classes there, the events. I've got a lot of information, I've got to take off the website also to contribute, distribute it to my colleagues up here. And as soon as I can get that package done, I'll bring out some more information to the general public and on what. This organization consists of. And basically, it's, it's a runoff of your California League of Cities. Um, this is the National League of Cities, I, I met several mayors, local mayors from California. And as soon as I. Announced who I was and where I was from, they all kinda came up to me and asked me, how in the heck you guys are doing, bringing in the businesses and we can't? And, and, and that was also relayed to me by um. The Mayor of Paris a couple of days ago, at that, Friday at the education luncheon we had. And first thing Mayor Vargas asked me is, how in the hell, oops, how in the heck? Um, you guys getting these, these companies coming into Movout and not Paris? And I says, because it's a better place to live and work, that's all there is to it, Mayor. So he said he'd be calling our city manager and, and um. And get some information from him, so I don't know if he's called you or not, but. Next thing I have is public safety. Last year I proposed. That my colleagues go along with me on proposing a new fire medic squad. And we were very successful. Up to this date, it's been very beneficiary to the, not only to that part of town, but the whole city and the fire department. At this time, I'm asking my, well, I'm gonna propose a second squad unit for the city. I just want to let everybody know that it will be on the, on, on the board. To, for discussion. And as soon as I, I get with the Finance Subcommittee and present this to them. We'll look at some costs and that I'll be able to bring that out to the public. But.
David, if you need a second, I'll give you a second on that, but I know how, I think the mayor is just gonna put it on the agenda if I.
Uh, I'm asking to put it on the agenda and I was told it would be and I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, it'll go to the Finance Subcommittee.
Subcommittee where we'll bring it out. Mayor and I sit on the Finance Subcommittee, so we, we'll be working with Marshall and, and the other. The other individuals, chief, we'll be working with you very closely. Uh, my goal is to have one in place by July first. Gotta remember. We have the unit, but we don't have the bodies. So we're proposing, proposing to cover that unit with. And correct me if I'm wrong, six bodies, chief?
A minimum of six bodies.
Minimum, okay, so we can look at eight or ten, but it'll be brought up and we'll be proposing that. And hopefully by July first of this new fiscal year, we'll have it in place, so. Just, Marshall, you can get those figures going and get ready to go there. Homeless. I went out and worked a day out there with Salvation Army. Some individuals or speakers have brought up about the program. The program is working, it is working. But. It's not for everybody out there. You know, you, you go out, you talk to these people and they said, just leave me alone, I'm fine. Well, we're trying to help you, we're trying to get you back on your feet. I don't need the help, I'm very comfortable the way I am now, just leave me alone. And again, it's not against the law to be homeless, but it's against a lot of trespass. So Salvation Army not only encourages them to, hey, let's, I can get you your new IDs, I can get you. Um, a job with the Salvation Army, just give us a chance. But there's homeless people that don't want that. And yes, they do go out and, and beg for money. And like what one speaker says, it's wrong. For the public, general public to give money. I don't, I offer them food or clothing, but not money. So yeah, you know, the community is, is part to blame for that, but there are some people that just don't want help. I've had some veterans. And that's another thing. Um, later this month, US Vet Organization is gonna have a dedication for the new hotels. I call them hotels, vets call them hotels, other people call them something different, on base. They have two hotels that went up, one's already in, in operation and they're going to dedicate that hotel, I believe it's March twenty-eighth on base, so. If, if, it's not actually on base, but it, it's part of the base, they consider it. If anyone's interested in attending, call my office or call staff and we'll make some arrangements to get you out there and, and especially the veterans too. If you need, want some more information, call my office. Call consul staff or city managers and we'll, we'll guide you the right way. The next thing, and sadly, I, I, I don't like bringing this up, but lately. A, a, a speaker mentioned it tonight, that this recall. You know. I learned a lesson last recall. I don't want no part of it this recall, I've been accused of organizing recalls. That's a flat-out lie. They see me at a, at a, at a restaurant eating lunch or even at the donut shop, having a donut with someone and I'm accused of. Oh, I'm, I'm having a meeting to organize this, this recall. I got better things to do than do that. If I, if you see me out there having dinner, lunch, whoever with somebody, it's not about the recall. It's about a concerned citizen asking me to come out for lunch and talk about situations. But there are some people out there that will continue to say, I have, I have something to do with recalls and that's a flat-out lie. And with that being said. Next month, is it next month, Tom? The, the day in Sacramento, yeah, it's eighteenth of.
That's correct, Councilman.
Okay.
It's eighteenth of April.
That's for the um.
The League's Legislative Action Days.
Committee or. And some of us will be going up there for one day, we'll be able to talk to our representatives up there and mingle around with them, so if there's. So if there's anything you want us to to take up to Sacramento, again, give us a call, jot it down in our notes and we'll take it up there with our state legislators out there and see what we can do. Other than that, I want to thank the staff, you're doing a heck of a job and bringing those jobs in. I don't know where Mike's at tonight, but.
Is that recruiting?
Like recruiting? Oh, New York, okay, well, he's not in the city, but he's doing his job, I believe, out there. You're doing a great job, Mike, wherever you're at, and your staff too. Again, code enforcement, you're doing good out there. We just, I know it's it's hard with this homeless people out there. Again, you know, somebody brought up about a budget for homeless. I've never heard of a city having a budget, but you know, it could happen, it could happen, but there's other resources that we could do for homeless people, the hotel vouchers, the base, get them a job where they can get into a rented home somewhere or whatever. But thank you, staff, for all for all the the great work you've been doing. Thank you.
The Councilmember Marquez, we have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. So first of all, last one was this, on Saturday, the Filipino-American Association had the installation of members, so we were able to attend that. Mayor Vargas of Paris was there, also Congressman Takano was there. And so we got a chance to talk about, you know, some things that are going on in in D.C. and what he's dealing with in Congress and everything going on over there. So that happened on Saturday, the Homeless to Work. I also had the opportunity to go out there and on a ride along with them with Lieutenant Kane and Vincent Fredborg. He, that gentleman is, he's he's a warrior, you know, we, I was just eating the other day at IHOP and there was a homeless woman and she asked me for some change and I'm the same, I don't give them money, I offer them food. I offered her food and she said, oh, yeah, can you please give me a hamburger? And I called the server over, I called Vincent, he gave me his cell number, five minutes later, he was there and he was talking to her and took a selfie with her and everything, so they were happy. So thank you to the Salvation Army and everyone involved in the Homeless to Work program is changing lives, it really is. Public Safety Expo, that's coming up on April fourteenth, if I remember correctly. And I'm really excited to announce that this year, we're going to have participation from four military branches, right? So the Marines, Navy, Army, and the Air Force will be there this year. They're going to bring a Humvee, they're going to bring an army ambulance out. I mean, you know, so thank you to staff, Shanna, I'm sure you're watching at home, thank you for helping me. And and all of our partners over at the Recruitment Center right down the street here for helping, you know, bring all this together. Next, the Moreno Valley College has a Easter egg hunt taking place this Friday, March twenty-third, from three to six P M. Fortunately, I will not be here, I'll be in Sacramento. But last time I was there last year, a lot of people went out, a lot of kids, a lot of families, it was a really nice day. So if any families watching, you know, take your kids out this Friday, March twenty-third, from three to six at Moreno Valley College. Also, last week, on Wednesday, Valley View, actually all the schools had events, walk-in events. And at Valley View High School, they were, we were all remembering what happened in Parkland, Florida. So the students organized an event at the stadium and the majority of the school came out, all the students came out to the bleachers and the A S B students gave a speech and they were releasing balloons, seventeen balloons each with a name on it. So it was very emotional and, but powerful because, you know, the students are, they're moving and they're speaking up and, I mean, they're making a big difference. So that that went really well and also thank you to the Police Chief, Chief Kurlewicz for the information on the the training, active shooter training and, you know, the RSOs are doing their job on the campuses. So thank you for working with them and and city staff for organizing that. And, you know, the students, they're asking for help, you know, they're, they need help and I'm glad that we're giving that to them. Let's see, also, a reminder about the Food Bank that takes place over on Redlands, one three seven nine three Redlands Boulevard, every first and third Saturday of the month from eight A M. to eleven A M. Thank God, we're now up to feeding six thousand people. So the numbers just keep growing. God is blessing us with new contracts with different businesses here in the city that staff is bringing here. So it's just, we're helping out so many people and, I mean, we have so much food, we're outgrowing our facility. So if you know of any facilities that are willing to help us out so we can store food, refrigerators and everything, please let us know so that we can open a second food pantry here in the city somewhere. So yeah, also, a resident mentioned housing for for the homeless or, you know, the budget that was mentioned. And and I've brought this up before to staff, but the tiny home concept. I know that that requires a specific kind of zoning and it's a fairly new thing, but being out there with the Homeless to Work program and knowing that they have a facility off the two fifteen that's kind of like a transitional, temporary housing facility so that they can get clean, anyone who has like an addiction problem or something, they get clean. And then where do they go after that? That's the problem. After they're there for a few months, where do they go? And we know there's a huge housing shortage in California, not just low income affordable, but just market rate housing as well, there's a huge shortage all across the state. So I think now that we're doing the general plan update, maybe we can incorporate the tiny home concept into this so that once these folks are, you know, out of the the transitional facilities, for example Salvation Army, or if we have folks like the the woman who came and spoke tonight, who do have income, but they just, they can't afford a hotel, you know? Maybe the tiny home concept would offer an affordable place for them to live, you know, for people who are past their addictions, who are healthy and they're willing to go out and help the community. So I I would like to see that incorporated somehow into the general plan update that we're working on. The U.S. Vet Facility, grand opening next week, the twenty-ninth. And it's really nice, they do look almost like hotels. I mean, if you go inside, they're beautiful, they're they're really, really nice. So I I'm, I will be there at the grand opening next Thursday. And let's see, lastly, I would like, I would like staff to explore the the possibility of putting a limit on the number of permits that we issue for liquor stores and smoke shops. I feel like that would be consistent with what we approved tonight for limits on permits for cannabis uses. I know I have to give credit where it's due, Rafael Burgueris, I got this idea from you. Watching the Planning Commission, you spoke about this. So I do have to give you credit for that one and I would like staff to explore the option, you know, a month, month and a half, so you can research and then bring that back to council to put a limit on how many smoke shop permits and how many liquor store permits we issue moving into the future. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
We have Mayor Potembaka.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to reiterate anything that has already been said, but I want to say thank you to our police chief for the update on the active shooter training. It's very important, it's in the news all the time and kids are worried, families are worried, I'm worried. It's it's just a phenomenon that's going on in our country. We just had another shooting today. Fortunately, our, the resource officer there was able to prevent further damage and I don't I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that we can be proactive and training everyone on how to respond to minimize the damage that can be done within our schools. I really appreciate that and I hope that it gets done quickly and maybe we start a second round, I don't know, but we need to start somewhere and I I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate that and the community does as well because it's it's needed and I like the approach you're taking. I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony at Moreno Valley High School for their new building and it's it's beautiful, the kids are happy and it's a long time coming because that school is so old and it was good to see those bungalows removed and have a nice structure up there. I also attended the League of California Cities, our Riverside Division Meeting at Canyon Lake and I I like to say that our city was very well represented. I think we filled up the whole table and I'm just so glad for staff for coming out there and showing the rest of the county, you know, how important our city is and thank you for that. And I'm going to have a coffee this coming Saturday, so hopefully it's not raining, I just heard the forecast and I'm hearing that we're passing out sandbags at the city yard, so come and get some. But if you're not doing anything, Saturday morning at ten o'clock at Berry Bean Cafe on the corner of Alessandro and Ellsworth behind Jack and the Bucks, come and grab a cup of coffee and let's talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potembaka. Just want to thank the staff for all of their hard work, you know, especially with the cannabis ordinance. There were two major ordinances that were passed today and also with the resolutions, the fees, you know, going through all that process. Also, I want to thank the staff for continuing to implement our strategic plan, Momentum Movale. I know that there's about over a hundred initiatives that have already been completed, you know, so continue to do that, continue to work on that, that's, you know, our shared vision that we have for the city to continue to move forward. Just want to update the public on a few things that I was able to do in the past week. Was able to recognize Mountain View Middle School for being selected a school to watch and that was a really nice ceremony. The kids were really, really excited, you know, that Mountain View was selected a school to watch. And there were a lot of parents there, kids, staff members, it was really a fun thing. Also, this past week, I attended, I attended a CAL Ed, which is an organization called California Economic Development for local agencies. And basically, they actually awarded the city two, actually several awards. And one of them had to do with higher Movale, so that was really exciting to receive that award. And then the other one had to do with the Promise Initiative, the partnership that we have with the college. And so there were about hundreds of people in that room and people were just so excited, you know, and they were asking me like, wow, like, you know, they were, they were actually asking the staff, you know, wow, like, you know, what was your award in? And then when Mike told them what the award was in, they're like, wow, this is like really unique, we never thought of, you know, a city doing that, you know, partnering with the college to help students with their second year, you know, in tuition and and then higher Movale. So they were really, really excited and it helped us put it, put the city on the map. So I think it accomplished that, so that was a great thing. And actually, at the next special presentations, we will have those awards, they're really huge, it was like half the size of you, it was, they were huge. So we'll have those awards and we'll have the college president from Moreno Valley College here to also, you know, be recognized as well for her leadership. I also want to thank the staff and Marshall for, you know, working on, you know, the the Homeless to Work program and working with Salvation Army. I was actually able to to meet Vincent. You know, we were at the at the IHOP and it was really touching to see the gentleman, Vincent, you know, come, you know, to really help that lady and literally within, I think, fifteen minutes, he came, you know, and and he was telling her about the program and trying to get her services. So I thought that was pretty cool. And, you know, he didn't even know who I was, you know, and then once I introduced myself, he was like, oh, wow, you know, you're the mayor, you know? So I mean, that goes to show you that that it's really a great program and I was able to see that in action, so that that's really good. So, you know, that that was a program, in case the public doesn't know, that was brought from Albuquerque. The mayor, I was able to speak to Mayor Berry at a conference and then I just decided that we needed to do it in Moreno Valley, we needed to bring that program here. So they've actually been able to clean about a hundred and thirty-four sites, which is pretty cool and they're continuing to do more and it's a win-win for our city where they're cleaning up the city and then at the same time, they're getting a paycheck from from the city through the Salvation Army, so that's a great thing. I also want to mention that March twenty-ninth at six P M. I will be hosting a telephone town hall like the city manager mentioned. Please go to movale.org/telephone town hall to register your name and phone number. It's literally like five seconds and then on that date and time, the system will actually call you. And it's pretty cool to participate. Last time I had, I think we had about thirty thousand, thirty thousand, I think, something like that, residents that were involved and then I think there was like a few thousand that stayed on, you know, for the whole hour and it was pretty amazing, you know, to to see that amount of engagement, you know, that that's out there, so I know those are really popular. I want to mention that on March twenty-fourth, there is a food truck event that's happening at the mall for the community. And then there's also a food truck festival that the city will be doing with the Movale Movies and Rocks in July as well. So without further ado, I'll go ahead and close, adjourn the meeting at nine twelve P M. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you.